Thank you for those that are here and others are still straggling in, understandable, given the weather conditions and given all the demands that each of our offices have from time to time. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone, members of council, members of staff, members of the media, any guests in the gallery. Members of the public are advised, our meetings are webcast live by City of Hamilton, temporarily archived on our website. Other individuals, media may also be audibly and/or visually recording this meeting, as well a reminder that all electronic devices are to be switched to the non-audible function during committee meetings. Madam Legislative Assistant Stephanie Paparella, are there any changes to our agenda?
No, three, Mr. Deputy Mayor, there are none.
Well, with that in hand, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Councillor Pearson, Mayor Eisenberger, who helped us make quorum, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried. Declarations of interest. Oh, I hear a tap from Councillor Partridge, and you are activated, councillor.
Thank you for the activation. Yeah, I just wanted to let everyone know, I think most of you know my dad is in the hospital, and for quorum purposes, I will need to leave here just after lunch. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, and thoughts and prayers are with Papa at his grand old age. Okay, staff presentations today. We have two budget presentations. These two gentlemen are usually here for every other budget presentation of senior leadership team in support of management, and today they are on tap: City Manager Chris Murray and General Manager of Corporate Services, Mike Zagerich. So let's start with our city manager, Chris Murray. Chris, welcome to the podium. And what is this, Chris? Number eight or number nine for the city manager of Hamilton? Seven, eight, nine?
Actually, I think this is my 10th year.
10th one. Congratulations.
Thanks very much.
The four of yours, sir.
I'm still surviving, that's right. So with that, through you Deputy Mayor, I'll just begin. And first of all, I want to recognize our management team, so Laura Fontana with HR, obviously, Andrew McKinney, our Chief Digital Officer, Charles Brown, who I understand got caught up in traffic, is going to be here shortly, and John Hurtel, Strategic Partnerships and Communication. But I also have to thank those that are really responsible for creating this presentation today, and Ryan McHugh and Jackie Durlough, who are the ones responsible for the look, feel, and content of the presentation, and of course, Monique Garwood and Jenny Hartwell, who are our finance people and are critical to the facts that I'm about to present. So with that, certainly the CMO, I mean, as a department within the organization, we have oversight of all the departments that work for you, but our focus on top of that is to ensure that the city strategic plan is lived. We provide critical support services for a number of areas, some of which I've mentioned, but auditing, HR, communications, corporate initiatives, strategic partnerships, revenue generation, and a digital strategy. From an organizational standpoint, this is what you have. We have really three divisions: Human Resources, as mentioned, Strategic Partnerships and Communications, Audit Services, and Andrea McKinney is our Chief Digital Officer. I think people realize that Andrea's talents are many, and that Andrea, in her previous life, worked for e-Health, and so had developed over a number of years, a tremendous amount of expertise in the digital realm. We have her focused on that for a variety of reasons, which I think will become obvious in a few minutes. Overall, from a complement standpoint, we're down one person, and our management-to-staff ratio is, as you see it here. So I'll get into the specifics around this chart in a few seconds. Of course, we have oversight of the strategic plan and its priorities, but if you're really to focus at one item in particular, our People and Performance Plan, the party that is spearheading that and making sure that it's realized is Laura through HR, but all the other functions, obviously, I have some responsibility for as well. I've talked, I think a few weeks ago, about our Trust and Confidence Report, where I presented to you some information about our services and subservices. I'm not going to read all of this, but when you look at the four functions that make up this department, you get to see the list of things that really amount to the services and subservices that we deliver under each of these divisions. So with that, what's important, I think, in any budget presentation, is what's coming down the road. So what are the trends and issues that we have to keep track of in order to ensure that our energies are focused where they should be? So I start with the citizens' expectations, and there's no question, transparency, access to information, involvement in decision-making, and certainly value for tax dollars are all things that is very much drilled into our heads. I should tell you that right now, we are, our citizens' service survey is closed, meaning simply that we have put out a survey to our residents, asking them to comment on the satisfaction they have with the services that we deliver, and I'll be presenting that to you in the coming weeks. Legislation, I think, in my time here as city manager, and certainly my time working for municipal government, I don't recall ever there being as much legislative reform as what's going on right now, whether it be to minimum wage, cannabis, things that are happening in our health field. There's a significant amount of provincial legislative changes, and of course, this does affect the way in which we deliver services. So it's something that we have to not only understand, but figure out how to make sure the organization addresses these changes. And of course, the next one, in terms of our workforce, we right now have four generations of people working for the City of Hamilton, and so we have a number of people retiring, we have a number of people wanting to work for this organization, and so it's important that we continue to make sure that we have the human resource strategies that are going to manage that change effectively. And of course, we have a number of unions that we bargain with, and so we have to pay attention to those matters and how we address them effectively. And technology, I don't think it's any great secret. I think five years ago, we may have viewed it in one particular way, but certainly now, we know the world is going more digital than ever before, and cities across the world, in fact, are embracing technology in a variety of ways, which it's important, I think, that we not only stay on top of, but we have a strategy for ensuring that we make the most of the opportunities that present. So with that, I just want to focus on some of our highlights from 2017. Cision Dashboard has been launched, as you know. It contains the services that you see on it. What's important here is that with the 10 services that you find on the dashboard, that give citizens access to our work, I mean, it's obviously available through our laptops and through our handheld devices, but everything that you see here is basically geared towards what we know people are interested in knowing more about. So that's an important step forward. But I can say as well that we plan on enhancing this further in 2018. I'll get to that in a few minutes. No doubt, you saw the press recently, that City of Hamilton has made the Top Seven Intelligent Communities Program. This is a worldwide program. When we talk about intelligent communities, I think sometimes we might mix it up with smart cities. So intelligent communities is really about communities that have the infrastructure to embrace the evolution or the evolving economy, which is more of a digital economy than ever been before. So things like broadband, you know, do you have adequate broadband infrastructure? We used to think, way back in the day, when we looked at our industrial sector and how that was driving our economy, we would think in terms of supporting that sector by having adequate roads, adequate sewers, adequate water. Those are the kinds of, adequate hydro, those are the kinds of things that really drove the economy. Now we know the economy increasingly is being driven by the digital age, and so do you have adequate bandwidth, not just in the rural, in the urban, but also in the rural. When we look at the sophistication of farming now, you know, it's not just a matter of, you know, the horse and buggy, which of course is long gone, but now the sophistication of our rural economy is only growing. So making sure we have adequate technology available to that part of our economy is critical. And so yes, we're very proud of the fact we made top seven in the world, and that we'll find out in June. And this is Andrea's work, with a number of other parties.
Congratulations, Andrea, to you and your team. Sorry, City Manager.
No problem. And so we're looking forward to the presentation in London, England, where they will announce the top city in the world for 2018. So we see how we do. And the other thing I have to mention is our mayor is in fact the National Chair of the Intelligent Communities Association, and so he's the one that certainly, along with Councillor Partridge and other members of council, have been, you know, pushing for us to, you know, advance in this area. So we're quite proud of that. The Amazon Report, this unstoppable movement that we've been focused on, that was something else that was spearheaded through this office. Interesting enough, we had a chance to talk to the Worldwide Director of Development for Amazon last week, to find out, you know, how we stand and what struck them about our proposal. What's very clear from that conversation was Toronto, I think, for really two reasons: the supply of tech workers that are already embedded in that community, in that city right now, but also access to future talent, which of course, they recognized Hamilton offered the same kind of opportunity. I think what was really telling in the conversation that we had with this individual is that they realized that the regional economy of Southern Ontario is significant, and they realized that anything that would happen that would result in Toronto becoming the choice community would have direct benefit to Hamilton, not just because of workers that would live in this community, but also other companies that typically follow Amazon when they make decisions like this. So obviously, we're going to stay in touch. This document, we're reporting on it annually in terms of how it's being used. As I said before, it's been downloaded 110,000 times. In fact, we are using this document as part of a manufacturing supercluster bid, which the federal government is orchestrating. It's an $800 million investment that the federal government will be making in advanced manufacturing, and we are working with Toronto, KW, right now, to ensure that, you know, we have a direct shot at making the shortlist on this program. So, I mean, needless to say, we use it in terms of other kind of companies that are, that we are now, instead of waiting for, we are targeting with this information so that we can explain to them why it is they should be in Hamilton. Stelco Land Strategy, as you know, we put together a very skilled team, made a proposal to the province about what it is those lands ought to be. We're very much believing that's advanced manufacturing for not just the jobs, but for the land uses and taxes is a more thoughtful strategy. And again, this is based on individuals that have national, international expertise and success, and so we are going to continue to make this known to the people that are going to be making decisions. Land Co. is the formal structure. It has not been created as of yet. The parties that would sit on Land Co. have been identified, but it has not been formally established. So we will keep, you know, you posted on this so that you understand exactly how it is that our strategy is going to be hopefully respected. Just want to talk a bit about, jump into the conversations. Back in 2006, we did a corporate-wide survey, and I would say, having been around at that time, the, one of the main issues that we had, I think, back then, was that we got the information, but we didn't know what to do with it, or at least we didn't do as much with it as we should have. This time around, we've surveyed, over 65% of our organization responded to the survey, which is pretty wonderful. In fact, most divisions, the turnout for the survey was, in fact, in excess of 80%. So the bottom line is, is that we've had considerably more people fill out the forms, if you will, giving us their insights into the organization, and I'll be in front of you on the 27th of this month with the results, and I'll just say this: we are lucky in that the firm that's doing this work for us benchmarks other municipalities in Ontario across the country, as well as the private sector, and on average, we are more positive than a number of other municipalities here in Ontario. So happy to show you the results and identify for you where our work is. So happy to show you the results and identify for you where our work is. Outfront Media is a New York City company that John Hertel's group has been working with, and last year, as you know, landed a $7.7 million digital media deal with them. That's going to extend over the next 15 years, and this, of course, involves signage along the link, as well as other locations within the City of Hamilton. Pier Eight, last year, we shortlisted five consortiums. I was directly involved in the evaluation of that, as well as we did some work with respect to the Hamilton Waterfront Trust, which, the bulk of which occurred last year. And so, I mean, we've landed in a place where I think it's clear to us as to the value of the waterfront trust moving forward, but equally importantly, the lands that they were leasing and how they can be incorporated into the Pier Eight development. So again, another opportunity to kind of advance our waterfront interests. Hamilton Tech Center, this is part of the land development program John oversees. We sold that last year to Clear Cable, one of the tenants that in fact resided in that building, and they have, they've taken over responsibility for this facility at the corner of Highway 6 and 5. And the good thing is, is that they are attracting companies similar to them in the tech field, in the digital field. Clear Cable is a company that plans, designs, and implements broadband infrastructure across North America, so very good tenant to have, if you will, and a great owner to have. I think the important thing here is that the $3.25 million certainly goes into our coffers, but it's a building that was starting to certainly demand more attention and more costs, and so we've been able to move that into appropriate hands. And I just want to highlight this, I don't know if you realize, but having a function within the City of Hamilton that generates revenue amongst municipalities across the country is somewhat unique. Not every municipality has a group of people who are looking at the abilities of the city and translating them into revenue generation. So I think it's important, last year, we, John's team generated $1.7 million. Since their inception back in 2015, they've generated three, over $3 million. And as I just pointed out, what they have contracted for as of today, moving forward from 2018 and on, is another $8 million. And when you break down the $1.7 million, quarter of a million is to compensate for staff. $350,000 of that $1.7 million goes into city programming, things like Canada Day, so that we're not, you know, having taxpayers pay for the celebrations, the things that make up Canada Day, so that's something that comes from this program, as well as Vanier Cup is another example, a bit of a sporting event, but also economic activity. John's team worked with Mike's team in terms of improving our investment income, so that was something through connections that we had with the credit union. And then, of course, $600,000 went directly to the levy. Again, another example, Meridian, we have a five-year deal with them for the farmer's market, and then we did raise $100,000 in sponsorship for the Vanier Cup back in 2017. Revamped Internet, just like our website, our website, as you know, a few years ago, was not as effective as it could be, and you know that's been fixed. But our internet, this is our internal website that our staff rely on to understand what's going on and receive information that's important to them. We revamped it without using any outside help, this was all done internally. This thing is accessed considerably, we've weeded out bad information or information of little effect, and what we have now is something that is a lot more responsive to the needs of our staff. Our employee newsletter, I don't know many organizations this size that don't have a corporate newsletter, but we've had nine additions, and the most latest one is right here in our hands, I know your offices get copies. We know online, this thing has been viewed over 14,000 times, and of course, with paper copies, there's other opportunities for people to know what's going on. So a good way for us to be connected as an entire family. And of course, our Human Rights Diversity Inclusion Strategic Plan occurred last year, including, of course, our transgender protocol, of which we are now in the process of training staff to ensure that they understand what's expected of them. Mental Health Strategy, I think we've talked about considerably, including the establishment of an action team and a working mind training approach. So mental health is something that obviously affects not just our staff, but our ability to deliver services in an effective way. And of course, further to that, you know, 1,839 individuals were put through various trainings within HR, including WMS and mental health strategy and other matters that HR oversees. There were 64 harassment and discrimination investigations undertaken by HR, 706 job postings, which of course means resumes, and there was more than 52,000 resumes that were processed. And then, of course, from that, from an audit perspective, our value-for-money audit, which I'll talk a bit more in a few minutes, looked at a number of things. One certainly that drew a lot of attention was our use of external consultants, and so we're reporting to you, I think, semi-annually on the progress that we're making with respect to that. And of course, Audit as well, looked at Ontario Works Employment Services and some of the advice that they provided. That department, that particular division, did in fact find its way into some improvements made in 2017. And then finalized the Audit Services Value-for-Money Pilot Program. As you recall, that was a three-year pilot. We agree that there is value in doing that kind of work. We reduced the FDEs that were in that department, but the way in which we agreed, I think, as a committee and as council, was that parts of the organization would second people into Charles's division to do value-for-money work going forward. So I know within my office, there's going to be some contributions to Charles's team, and so others in the organization will be doing the same. And again, 12 reports from Charles's division with 110 recommendations, 94% of them were supported by the organization, and in terms of making sure that the staff is meeting the requirements of their own training, 100% of them have required or received the training necessary. And then lastly, in terms of 2017, although this did get, this did take place in January of 2018, all the work that goes into our employee recognition event occurred in 2017, and the people that you see here are the ones that were honored and recognized, including our Jack Brown. With that, we'll get into the specifics of what's going on within the department. So Audit Services, I guess the bottom line, if I can, is just take you to the overall as a department, our increase is in the order of 1.3%. You can see the breakdown as to what's contributing to that. The CMO, as you can see here, I mean, that really involves two people, myself and Darlene Barber, and so a lot of the cost of our two positions is distributed across the organization, given the nature of our work. So it would look like in 2018, I'm paying you to be here, but that's not the way it works. So a little humor there, just to see if everyone's seeing. Very little, yes, exactly. 2018 budget drivers overall, salary and benefits, of course, you know, there is the agreed-upon increases in salaries that council approves, plus there's the steps that people are able to achieve within their pay band, so those are the things that are driving that figure. I think the rest of it is pretty self-explanatory. I think that maybe the one that might stand out a bit here is saving and consulting and contractual budgets. We consolidate a number of roles within the city manager's office. I mean, communications is a more consolidated function right now, and so our whole point of doing that was to better have better oversight of that work and to reduce the amount of reliance on outside support, so some of that figure is a result of that. So it's strategic partnerships and communications, there's the organizational chart. I want to make sure that you understand, revenue generation, I've talked about some of their successes before, included in revenue generation is the Community Enrichment Program, that makes up part of that function. Communications and corporate initiatives, you can see the breakdown as to the personnel that are involved in that, in that work. So communications, web, not just development, maintenance, app development oversight, digital program, the social media, media buying, graphic design, corporate initiatives, you can see what the breakdown is there. Overall, there's no increase in FDEs from 2017. And then, as pointed out here, the Hamilton Farmer's Market, those staff are reflected in this total as well, so the 14, or the 4.19. And there's the breakdown as to what's, what the costs are, what's driving them. So overall, this division is at 2%. And again, the strategic partnership and revenue generation, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of what that acronym stands for, so. Here's the breakdown in terms of what's driving the budget, so again, salary and benefits for the reasons I've said before, and then the rest, I think, is hopefully fairly straightforward. I just want to make sure that, you know, we've heard many, many times about the importance of communication, and we're just taking a little bit of time here to make sure that not just in written communication that we provide on pieces of paper, but obviously, we're communicating in a whole variety of ways. Just from a social media standpoint, we have almost 64,000 followers on Twitter. Annually, we're in the order of about 3,200 tweets, and then retweets in the order of about 21,000. And then in terms of, you know, basically eyes on, on a screen, we've had, we're in the order of about 11 million impressions a year. And of course, you know, we are now with our app, I mean, people are able to follow us in a whole variety of ways. So this is a great opportunity for us to get information out, whether it be about snowstorms or what's happening with respect to our health programs or anything else, this is how we use Twitter. YouTube, we have a YouTube channel, just another way in which people can understand what it is that is going on in this community, what it is that City Hall is doing. So another way to give short information updates on things that will matter to people. So in total, there's about, just over 500 videos that are on this channel, and so you can see what the number of views are. We have just over 1,000 subscribers, there's almost 300,000 minutes of video that was watched on average, and about half of this is done over people's smartphone devices. Instagram, I mean, another method by which we communicate so that people stay connected to what's going on in the city. Our followers are probably a little low right now, I think we're in the early days of that program, and we're going to do more to make sure that people know what's going on with respect to the city. Of course, our website, which you'll recall years ago, I remember councillor Powers saying in no uncertain terms just how badly broke it was. I would say today, it is not that way at all. Certainly, there's been a lot of improvements made to our website. But just to give you a sense of the, you know, the maintenance of this thing, which doesn't happen, you know, without some thought and effort, we are looking at just about every month about 800 web requests, or in other words, information updates or additions that have to be made to our website. And the way that we used to manage it was, there was actually over 100 people that had access to the website and could change it in whatever means or manner that they want it. And so we've consolidated that down to four people, so that it is way, not only do we have a better standard for managing that website, we are actually a lot more efficient in getting the information updated and reflected on it. So a much better way of managing an important channel in our, in our organization. Of course, you know, revenue generation, we're going to continue to make sure that Canadian Country Music Awards is supported and enjoyed in this community, and we'll try to offset some of those costs through the work of John. And of course, Land Development Task Force, we have closed a couple of projects, but in 2018, the work plan that you approved, there's five that we're going to be focused on, and another three that are ongoing that will take longer periods of time. Just to give you a sense of the kinds of people that we work for from a revenue generation, you can see on the screen, it's not to suggest these are all the ones, I mean, John's team are always looking for people to partner with, and I think it's, you know, as I say, it's a unique way in which we generate interest in this city, but also money. And of course, the city's Performance Excellence Dashboard, certainly, we want to make sure that the city or the citizens get information that they want to see, and so that dashboard is important to them, and I'll talk a bit more about it in a few minutes. Phase two of the trust and confidence reports happening in 2018, so we saw the first phase of it was presented about a week or so ago. We are going to continue to use that document on our website as a means by which to explain to people what it is effective we do for a living and how good are we at it. And then councillor Marula's suggestion about a Hamilton summit in advance of the election, we're going to be meeting, I think, later today to go over the scope of that. The ultimate focus will come back to this committee for approval, but really important that there's a, there's a number of priority issues that the province, those that are on the campaign trail need to understand are important to Hamilton, and hopefully we get their attention. The digital office, just very quickly, as you know, the city app has been, has been launched, the kinds of information that's on it, you can see here. I want to point out something, though, very quickly for you, that we need to manage app development in the city. So we heard the other day, the presentation for Public Works about Where's My Plow? And I think if we leave the divisions, if you will, or departments in the organization to come up with their own apps and whatever means that they want, you're going to have a pretty inefficient way in which to kind of advance these kinds of opportunities. So in other words, one of the things Andrea will be doing is to make sure that needs of our citizens in terms of, you know, appropriate apps are understood, but also that our organization puts in the effort to create the apps. In other words, we're not going to leave it to certain individuals to come up with something that is needed by the community. Andrea will have the oversight, and in fact, she will be the one responsible for developing an app strategy. And so not only will we identify where we're going to, how, or what we're going to develop in a way of apps, she'll be responsible for reporting into senior management as to the progress that's being made on it, because five years is obviously too long to be waiting for an app like Where's My Plow? City Lab, you've heard of, I mean, those are the institutions that are involved right now, there are 11 projects, there's over 135 staff directly involved, a number of city staff here and faculty members. So far, there's about 6,000 hours of time. The area of focus is really twofold, it's climate change as well as community health. And so those are the projects that they're working on, and we'll be reporting back on what it is that we've achieved as a result of us putting our effort into this. Very quickly, right now, Andrea is working with Hitachi to develop a smart city strategy in terms of, you know, our use of technology across this organization, and will be developing an implementation roadmap, which will be presented to senior leaders to ensure that we understand it and how at best we can take advantage of it. Citizen Dashboard, 10 dials were, if you will, created last year, another 10 is going to happen this year. And again, this dashboard reports on information that we know citizens are looking for. We find out that through our call center and other means, but important that we continue to develop that dashboard. And I just want to draw attention to something that we're doing as well. We're working with institutions in this community on the federal government's Smart City Challenge. We are going to make an application in April, and again, it involves Health Sciences St. Joe's Linds, and we're hoping that we're going to get to the next phase, which is, will be a $250,000 grant that will come to us to provide a more detailed submission to the federal government. And what that will amount to is a $50 million award that the federal government is going to make for whoever's successful in this, in this program. So we're going to bring to you what it is that we think we should be focused on as a city as part of that submission, but I'd say, given the people that are involved, I think we have a reasonably decent shot at being successful. Human Resources, you can see the structure as it is. I mean, Laura, last year, there was a fair bit of work that went on within HR to align the talent to the resources or to the services that are necessary. No changes in complement, as noted here. The budget is, as you see, overall, it's a .5 increase. Not good enough. Thank you for that comment, councillor.
The chair, the chair is listening, carry on, councillor, please.
Okay, we're almost there. Salary and benefits is driving it, as you would expect, and other factors that are important to identify are here. But to give you an idea of the things that they're working on, so about a year or so ago, we developed something called the Leadership Profile, and basically, it describes what a city manager ought to do, what a general manager ought to do, and what a director ought to do. It complements the job description, but it gives, you know, people in the organization that want to aspire to those positions, gives them an idea of what kind of competencies you'd have to have to be at those levels. We're going to advance this now down to the manager and supervisor level in 2018, which will give even more explanation as to what you should expect from your manager, what you should expect from your supervisor. Phase two of the people survey is going to happen, this is the one where we take the results, which you're going to hear about on the 27th, and we action them. We will not make the same mistake that was made in 2006, where, you know, we got a lot of valuable information, but we, we didn't do enough with it to kind of change, if you will, the way in which we run the organization. But Don Hanneman has done a phenomenal job getting us this far, and But Don Hanneman has done a phenomenal job getting us this far and so the action planning is really now the phase that we're going to focus on in 2018. Of course, 2018 is the year in which we have to start to get our heads wrapped around our collective agreement bargaining strategy, which will occur in the first year of the next term of council. We are going to develop a, or introduce the Human Resource Portal. This is a very important facet of our Intranet that is going to allow people to get direct access to important information so they can, you know, without having to ask people all the time to go chase down information, they can kind of serve themselves with this portal. And of course, you know, implement the training administration model of PeopleSoft and as well as develop corporate learning and development strategy so that the monies that we do have, we want to make sure we get the most out of them in terms of corporate learning and development. And then lastly, audit. The structure is, as you see here, they're down one position, but that, as I say, one FTE, that was as a result of the Value for Money report that you saw last year. And what we agreed is that we're going to continue to do Value for Money, but we're going to con people from the organization into Charles's division to make sure that that work continues to happen. So I know directly in my office that some of my staff will be working with him, but others in the organization as well will be supporting that important function. And there's his budget and the drivers, of course, as you would expect, salaries and benefits is really what's causing the increase, as you can see here. So with that, something that was in the capital budget and has already been approved, I think from last year, we're going to pilot the hotline service. I know Councillor Johnson talks about, you know, people that, you know, that want to bring to light matters that are going wrong in the organization. We have the whistleblower program, but sometimes people don't want to necessarily raise this through normal means. The hotline is a service that we see in other municipalities, we're looking at the one in Toronto. So it's a way to better handle increasing demands of fraud, waste and major wrongdoings. In other words, it's a channel in which that we can get information to guide our search. And then, of course, want to make sure that all the auditing work continues to be found on the website, which we're doing through the Trust and Confidence Report. And as mentioned, I think, just a previous meeting, an annual report of the auditing service activity so that you get everything kind of wrapped up into one report. With that, thank you.
Chris, for your 10th anniversary budget presentation, excellent and thorough as always, and you're the consummate city manager. And to my colleagues, in all these budget presentations, I'm allowing free-flowing Q&amp;As and commentary since there's no action items. With that in hand, I will go to Councillor Ferguson, please.
Thank you very much, Sharon. Chris, great job.
Thanks.
Great budget. You know, you're doing an amazing job for us and I think I've said it publicly before, we're lucky to have you. I only have one question and that was on page nine, and this is the Stelco lands, I don't know if you need to go back.
Yep.
And the Stelco land seems to be stuck in the mud, you know. We really celebrated the fact that we were able to get hundreds of brownfield property sitting idle and it's industrial wasteland back into production. And there's this organization called Land Co that was supposed to be struck and a board of directors on that to start moving the process forward and it was amazing breakthrough the province would backfill the cleanup of this land. Nothing's happening and, at least from my perception. And I was tipped off last week from a good source that Stelco has actually asked for it to go on hold because they may want that land back. Do you know anything about that?
Could you just repeat that, sorry? Stelco what?
This is a rumor, I just wanted to hear. Has asked to put the whole thing on hold because they may want that land or some of it back. Have you heard anything to that effect?
Not to that, I don't think they would have that kind of ability, to be quite honest. This is a court-driven entity that Land Co is. Right now, Ernst &amp; Young is more or less facilitating all matters related to these lands until such time as the Land Co is formally enacted. We know that the members are identified. I've not heard about Bedrock having that kind of sway over this process and that would be concerning.
I don't want to leave you the impression that it's a, they're swaying it, they're asking for it to be put on hold, which could slow down the process and it seems to be going slow. Maybe my perception's wrong on that.
No, no, no. Your perception's correct. In fact, Land Co was supposed to be in effect operating last June and then we heard it was going to be December and then we heard it was going to be January. And so I don't have a, and it's not that we haven't asked the questions, I mean, we're asking directly of the Ernst &amp; Young facilitator, you know, want to have a clear understanding of the mandate of Land Co. And so, I mean, we're asking the right questions and wanting to get on with, you know, seeing these lands turned into, you know, successful employment lands, but things seem to be very slow. But I think as, you know, as we were promised Ed Clark, I think he said, once that Land Co was established, they'd be very interested in not only our land use strategy, but very interested maybe in securing the team that we put together to create that strategy. So, you know, it's, there is, and the mayor, in fact, and I were talking yesterday about making, you know, further inquiries into, you know, what is Ed Clark, in fact, still working on? Because my understanding is that he's moved on to another portfolio. So we need to find out who, from a, you know, senior administrative perspective is guiding this because you're right, things are slow.
Okay, so from your perspective, Stelco has not made that ask, at least you haven't been informed of that ask.
No.
And, you know, possibly they have and that's why it's going slow. And it'd be good if somebody from the city could just follow up on that because it's a horrible plight in our city, you know, that vacant arid like buildings down there. And, you know, having that breakthrough of getting the province to backstop a cleanup was significant.
Absolutely.
We should be getting going on. That's my only question, but thanks for a great help again.
Thank you, Councillor.
Thanks, Councillor Ferguson. Next on my list is Councillor Partridge, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Chris. Good presentation. I particularly liked the way it was laid out, you know, with, done in the different block style and format. Two questions.
Yep.
Couple of times in the presentation, you've, the line in there, "Hamilton Farmer's Market has an additional 4.19 FTE included in boards and agencies." So that's mentioned a couple of times in here. Could I just have a bit of an explanation for that, please?
John?
Yes, thank you. And through the Chair, Councillor, approximately two years ago now, council approved the establishment of a not-for-profit corporation to operate the farmer's market on behalf of the city and council. And in doing so then, from a, say, an oversight point of view, it's become part of the boards and agencies category. So it's on this chart because it still reports, the staff or city staff, and they still report through me. So their numbers, if you will, are independent and they were here fairly recently during the Boards and Agencies presentation for their budget, which council approved. But we still show them connected to me because of the oversight that I provide.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and just having that unpacked a little bit. So, you know, yes, they were here with the boards and agencies and it is purely for the direct reporting line that they're included in this presentation, is that correct?
Through the Chair, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the Value for Money audit that Charles is doing an outstanding job on, they answer to or report to Audit, Finance and Admin, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because I'm just, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm just wondering, it was Councillor Whitehead and myself and others that really pushed for that Value for Money auditing over the years and very, very pleased to see that it's going to continue as it should. And I'm wondering if there will be opportunity or any thought given to doing a presentation to the broader council, just an annual update, that kind of thing?
If I can, through the Chair, I think that's a great idea. I think in Charles's comment the other day was about doing annual report, which would speak to not only the Value for Money function and the, if you will, the regular auditing function that his group does, they also consult, they also do enterprise risk assessment for our organization. So giving you an entire view of all the work that's going on, what they're finding. So it's more than just a report, it could easily be a presentation.
Yeah, thank you. And, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I just think that's so important because, you know, it's something that we really champion for, we moved the motions, we really got behind the Value for Money audit. A bit of a slow start, took a couple of years to get the, you know, the skill sets that were needed for the Value for Money audit, because it's not the same as a regular audit as we know. So, you know, certainly I think it would be beneficial, particularly to new members of council, to be able to have that, but also, Mr. Deputy Mayor, for the broader community out there, you know, there was lots of talk about this four years ago, five years ago, and then we know internally the work is being done. But I think it's something that really needs to be, you know, as a presentation for the broader audience to see. We're doing our due diligence, staff are doing a great job. Thank you, Charles, very much appreciate your work and others. And I just think that's something that we need to show our taxpayers, that we are looking at the bottom line across the organization. And my last comment is that in the eight years that I have been at this table, I am just so pleased to see how far we have come, not only in our organizational structure and the initiatives that we're championing, but even down to the financial reporting that we so aptly get from Mike and his group. It's easy to understand, I think it's a huge benefit to our citizens and certainly very much appreciated by this councillor. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Partridge, and for your leadership on the Value for Money audits. So city manager, you and Director Brown will take that under advisement, work with clerks for a future presentation. Thank you very much. Next on my list, Councillor Whitehead, please. Welcome.
In fact, thank you. In fact, that's what I was going to focus on, I had looked at other cities before I initiated the motion to have Value for Money audit because I thought it was timely. But it's also my understanding through the first run, one of the things that was identified is that, and many of the departments, there wasn't appropriate metrics for performance to measure with to determine if you're getting value. So I guess the question I'm asking now is, when that was identified, I understand that you've taken it to heart and are making every effort to ensure that through the whole organization that we have those metrics in place. So the question obviously is, where are we at with that?
So, and through the Chair, I appreciate that question because you're absolutely right. It's taken us some time to get here, but as you notice in all these budget presentations, there's usually a lot of information we're providing you of what people get for the money they spend. And I think you saw in Jason's presentation about now wanting to benchmark our service delivery against other municipalities. So that's another step in the right direction. And certainly our Trust and Confidence Report, which is really a direct result of your direction to us, that documents, obviously, all of our services and subservices, but also explains why we have to do or why we provide those services, but most importantly, how good are we at providing them? So again, it's this, you know, if you can't measure it, you can't manage it. It's as simple as that. And we talk a lot about continuous improvement in this organization, which is, again, it's a way in which we can respond to things that aren't, maybe we're not, we're not as good at something as we should do, should be. Our continuous improvement program, you know, will laser in on something and look at, is there a process failure, is there a resource failure, what is it that's going on? And then what I love about it is it's our front line is doing the work. So where you started us in terms of metrics and performance measurement, Value for Money, that has grown into the programs that you see now. You're seeing it through our budgets, as I said, and behind the scenes, we work constantly on continuing how we deliver services.
I appreciate that. I know that I had a conversation with Vicky and I've been watching what's happening in other jurisdictions in respect to the metrics. So you want this outcome, you're spending X amount of dollars to get this outcome. And the question at the end of the day, are you getting the outcome? And are you spending absorbent money to get there and is there a more effective way to get and reach that outcome? So that's all part of the Value for Money audit, to determine whether we're not only spending money wisely, it might be good programs, but if we're overspending relative to the outcome, then we need to review the approach we're taking. So I'm hoping, as we go through these processes, that we'll identify areas that may exist and we can rethink about and retool the approaches we're taking. So I think it's a great start and I think the presentation, I did go through it because I went through your overhead because I wasn't here for the beginning and I do appreciate all the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And all the staff, sorry. You've got to say, the people that make you look good in the background.
Every day, yeah.
Thanks for your co-leadership on that Value for Money auditing process, Councillor Whitehead. And, Mr. Mayor, we must acknowledge, thank you for your leadership in helping our city reach the top seven across the world in terms of intelligent communities. Motion to receive the city manager's presentation, move by Councillor Conley, second by Councillor Ferguson, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chris. Moving on to Corporate Services Department, operating 18 budget presentation, General Manager, Mike Zagerich, and his fabulous team that are here to support him. Mike, the floor is yours, welcome. And equally with the city manager, another fine member of our senior leadership team that has kept our city moving and has made Hamilton such a popular destination now that people around the world are discovering us. And a lot of that has to do with our corporate management leadership team and, Mike, you're a valuable part of that. So welcome and for the next while, as much amount of time as you need, the floor is yours.
So thank you, and through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'll ask you, if I start to grow a little too quiet, I'm just fighting a bit of a head cold, just please ask me to speak up and I'll just pause and just expand on the Chair's comments is, we are fortunate to have a fabulous corporate services leadership team. And I'm fortunate, this is my sixth corporate services budget presentation, and I would say, six years ago, when I was asked to be in this position as interim, I was very fortunate to have a very supportive departmental leadership team. And while some of the faces are changing, I continue to be very fortunate to have a very supportive, cohesive and effective corporate services leadership team. So I thank you for that and I thank you for the support you provided me through the corporate services leadership team.
Mike, I have brought some extra Halls lemon, lasagnas, if you need one, just let Stephanie know and I'll pass them along to you.
Beyond the Halls, if you have any other remedies, Councillor, if you can be willing to share those, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
So beyond the corporate services leadership team, I just want to extend my appreciation to Joe Vera. Joe is a, is a senior project manager in Brian McMullin's Division Financial Planning, Policy Administration, and Joe's helped the Corporate Services DLT in putting today's presentation together, as well as our customer service staff who report up through Cindy Mercanti in terms of some of that infographics that you'll see today. So again, thank you to those staff. And finally, a thank you to Janie Hartwell. So you heard Chris recognize Janie Hartwell, our finance admin manager. Janie not only supports the city manager's office corporate services, but she also supports planning and economic development and the role of finance admin manager. You would have heard earlier this week, Mr. McKinnon make reference to the retirement of one of our other FNA managers, Anna Karian and Janie Hartwell. This is likely going to be Janie's last budget presentation, likely because she's advised it will be her last budget. But again, so I just want to extend appreciation not only for Janie's efforts in terms of helping us to support this year's budget 2018, but over the years in terms of her role as FNA manager, for all of her support. A personal thank you from me to Janie, but as well, I know it's an appreciation, a thank you from the corporate services leadership team as well. So in terms of corporate services, you'll recognize that corporate services really provides strategic support services and some targeted financial, as well as professional services to the city internal departments, but as well to our citizenry. And we do that through legal and risk management, IT, financial services and financial planning, customer services and provincial offenses administration. I'll have to be careful, I always refer to it as Provincial Offenses Act, but the function is Provincial Offenses Administration, as well as the office of the city manager. So I'll pause here. I recognized Janie and I just want to extend my appreciation to Rose. This will be Rose's last budget presentation as well. Rose is retiring at the end of March. So I know we're going to have plenty of opportunity in the coming weeks to recognize Rose and her years of service, not only with the city of Hamilton, but previously with the city of Stone of Hamilton, but previously with the City of Stony Creek. So I just want to extend my appreciation to Rose, and thank her. In terms of the services and subservices, corporate services supports about 10 services and 31 subservices. And we continue to evolve how we provide that support to the services. Each year, the department looks at opportunities for both efficiencies and savings. I want to recognize the great work of our cash handling team, as well as the work of staff who've progressed through our lean Six Sigma work and the ISO work in terms of trying to identify efficiencies or changes in the way that we deliver our services. In addition, you'll recognize that corporate services has evolved structurally. We've had some additions to corporate services. Most recently was the addition of clerks and legal services, and I want to thank both Rose and Nicole for their support in 2017 leading into 2018. And I've very much appreciated working with Nicole, for instance, on the Elektra merger. That was our first opportunity to work very closely, and so I appreciate all the support that Nicole provided, not only to myself, but to the shareholder, the City of Hamilton, as it relates to that proposed merger. Building off of that, that is one of our highlights for 2017. You'll recall that City Council, as shareholder, contemplated the proposed merger of Gulf Hydro with Elektra. And it was really a tuck-in in terms of Elektra's strategic plan. Gulf Hydro was a tuck-in, provided some great opportunities and value for the City of Hamilton. And while our percentage share devolved from approximately 18.13 to about 17.5%, we're leveraging a stronger balance sheet. So the benefit to stakeholders and principally to the City of Hamilton is about $4.1 million in additional dividends over the next 10 years, 10 years post-closing. So a very benefit, or a very strong benefit to the City of Hamilton. And again, in terms of Elektra's strategic plan, it really did align with their strategic plan. Some additional highlights for 2017 is the technology, the platform that we're using today, the Agenda Management System upgrade. In January, the city launched a new Agenda Management and Live Stream System, Escribe, and together with the upgrades and new audio visual equipment in the council chambers, it provides for a greater experience for our viewers and our citizens. This was a collective. I just want to recognize this was a collective effort that involved clerks, IT, communications, and facilities from Public Works. Other accomplishments include the completion of the lobbyist bylaw review, as well as the board boundary review. Customer service, I won't go into a lot of detail. I'm hoping that we'll have another day to recognize our customer services staff, as well as staff across the organization. In 2017, the city's online customer service training program was awarded internationally-recognized Gold Markham Award in digital media and training, sorry, training module category. And so I'm hoping at a future date, we'll be able to recognize all the staff who were involved in developing that training module, as well as I know that we have a second recognition, a second award that we'll be celebrating in 2018 as well. In addition to the, to our work around customer service, is our customer service staff and their service channel staff have worked across the organization, helping other divisions develop dashboards. And those dashboards really enable the service areas to have a better appreciation as to what is transpiring within their divisions, and allows them the opportunity to recalibrate if necessary in terms of their service delivery. Call handling was pre-launched, and that included the consolidation of water calls and transit calls in 2017. And you'll see that later in my presentation as to the impact that's having on our customer contact center. Other highlights in 2017 was the launch of the multi-year business planning and budget implementation. And so now you're seeing through the 2018 budget process, the alignment of the business plans with the strategic plans, and then the alignment of the budgets to those business plans, so that you really have a sense as to what resources we're applying and leveraging to support council's strategic plan. In addition, we launched a new budget operating system. And finally, the City of Hamilton realized an upgrade in our credit rating. So that was a very positive, independent, external assessment of the city's financial position and performance. Also, 2017, in terms of financial services taxation area, was our procurement policy review that was undertaken in 2017, and that looked at council's discretionary spending. Our tax system upgrade was launched. This is an upgrade to a web-based platform that's going to provide increased customer service support. And so this is a evolution in terms of leveraging the automation of bail techs such that our customers will eventually be able to leverage more self-supporting service through that platform. So again, it's, we are evolving in terms of how our citizenry is wanting to interact with the City of Hamilton and in this situation, our example with taxation. E-bidding portal was launched. So this provides now the opportunity for our vendors to get information in terms of tender documents electronically, but it also provides city staff the opportunity to measure performance of our vendors electronically. You'll recall part of the report from Audit Services as it relates to our consultants was an observation for improvements as it relates to vendor performance. And now this electronic platform will provide staff that opportunity to more effectively, efficiently assess the performance of our vendors and ensure where there needs to be some corrective actions as it relates to their performance, that we can support that through the support of procurement services to the departments. Legal and Risk Management, the support from Legal and Risk Management to HR, corporate facilities, and clerks with respect to the transgender protocol, work that Legal supports to other departments, for instance, Public Works with the P3 Canada Biosolids and Woodward Upgrade Project, support from Legal as it relates to West Harbor Support, including the Pier 8 development opportunities. So these are examples where we're working across the departments to provide them either with targeted legal support or other support such as financial or IT support. So just some examples of some of the highlights from 2017, as well as Risk Management supported two compassionate grant programs. In 2017, we had some extraordinary weather events that triggered two compassionate grant programs, and that was supported by Risk Management in, again, in 2017. Some trends that we're looking at in terms of 2018, you would have seen this common theme from Chris's presentation, as well as from the other three presentations, Paul, Jason, and Dan's, is as Chris has referenced, there's been extraordinary amount of legislative regulatory change, and that is going to continue to impact corporate services divisions in 2018. So the Infrastructure for Jobs and Prosperity Act is going to require staff working with council over the next number of years, I believe, starting in 2019, evolving into 2021, '22, setting service standards for our capital assets. So beyond setting service standards, we will have to align our capital budgets in those coming years to align to those service standards. So that's going to take some considerable work leading into 2019. 2019, council will have to approve a policy with respect to setting those standards. And then I believe, starting in 2021, we need to work collectively to set those service standards across our asset groups, I believe, evolving to 2024. So that's one legislative change. Modernizing Ontario's Municipal Legislation Act, or Bill 68, City of Hamilton's well-positioned. We have a code of conduct for council and for boards agencies. So again, that is an area that we have been proactive in terms of preparing for that legislative change, as well as the role of Integrity Commissioner will be expanding, and so we need to adapt to those changes in terms of the role and responsibilities. Building better communities, building better communities will have an impact on legal services. You heard or may recall from Jason's presentation, the changes in terms of the OMB transitioning over to the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal is going to trigger a lot of developers being proactive in terms of protecting their interests, and that will require some additional resources in that transition period from legal services. So you'll see a report coming forward. Sorry, you've already received that report with respect to some legal services supports that will be required in that transitional period. So again, that will have an impact not only on planning staff and legal services staff, but it'll have an impact on the corporation as well. With respect to, sorry, Conserving Watershed Act, we have an interest with respect to governance and conservation authority. So that will be a legislation and the proposed regulations that we'll be monitoring in terms of what the city's interests are. The Construction Lean Amendment Act will require our procurement, as well our legal services staff, to be proactive in terms of preparing for the timely payments with respect to our contractors and subcontractors, as well as the issue around holdbacks. So again, another example where there will be an impact to corporate services, our divisions and our staff. With respect to technology, we continue to focus on how to better leverage technology. We've initiated through our Oracle PeopleSoft upgrades to the financial and the HR modules, adding the module with respect to HR recruitment. So we are looking at opportunities of leveraging existing technology, recognizing then the case of Oracle PeopleSoft. You'll see in the IT budget, there's a pressure. What we're seeing is these platforms and the upgrades to these platforms are evolving in a very different manner, where previously you would have seen an upgrade every three to five years. Now you're seeing annual upgrades. And so that's having an impact on our workload and our resources. Questica, that Questica is our capital budget module. We're upgrading Questica, our capital budget module, in an effort to try to develop more automated reporting around reserves, for instance, so that we have more timely information with respect to the status of our reserves, as well as the forecast as to where those reserves are trending, as well as providing not only council, but the public, more fluid information with respect to our capital projects and the status of those capital projects. Bail Tech, which is our property tax system, we're looking to provide additional self-service capabilities, example where customers can view and pay for property taxes online. That's something that we're looking at for 2018. Finally is Kronos. Kronos is a corporate-wide initiative with respect to scheduling, as well as the financial reporting of our employee-related costs. That is an initiative that is being started in 2018 and will be supported across a number of divisions of corporate services. Continuing on, some areas we're continuing to focus on is Hamilton's property tax competitiveness position. I know this is a priority area for council. We have a number of challenges with respect to some of our classes, what's transpiring in some of our non-residential classes. So again, working through council, through the budget process, as well as through other work, such as our Development Charges Background Study, which again, is being initiated by staff currently, is, will be trying to positively affect the city's overall tax competitiveness position. Support for sustainable investments in management and funds and reserves, we continue to be focused on, and we will be developing some additional reserve policies to try to improve our financial management and overall financial position. Leveraging new technologies and maximizing existing solutions, so through our IT division is, there's an expectation for increased access to open data that will have to be supported, as well as we're looking at multimedia platforms for new business solutions. Examples are the Escribe, eSolutions, Web Center, and PeopleSoft enhancements. Access to in-person counter locations, telephone, and email service delivery through our customer services area. We want to optimize the call handling platform to support our citizen service experience through web and app enhancements, and we want to support consistent service experience across the service platform. So through Cindy and her team and our service channel team, we're looking at not only counters, but the call center, as well as our website. And we're already starting to see some transition on how citizens are interacting with us across those various channels. Clerks enhance service delivery through online applications or request forms. Legal continues to manage the increase of claims and litigation files and complex contracts and bylaws. And finally is our workforce. You'll see through the Art People Survey that corporate services has a relatively high maturity in terms of our workforce, and that is going to transition into some risks as it relates to succession planning and workforce planning. So you heard me this morning make reference to some retirements, as we expect to see with that mature workforce, some continued evolution in terms of corporate services as an organization, and we need to just ensure that we have the appropriate strategies in place in terms of those transitions. And it will evolve into some succession planning, but I expect there'll be some recruitment as well from outside of the organization. So in terms of the organization, you'll see is we are not proposing any change in terms of complement. As I mentioned previously, the corporate services table, we've had to add a leaf to the table to welcome legal services and clerks to our table. Overall, the complement is just short of 445 FTEs. The racial management staff to management ratio is about 13.4. And you can see the composition of the department. Rose, leading the city clerks office, Cindy, leading customer service and provincial offenses administration, Brian, leading financial planning policy administration. Rick, this was a change in 2017. We eliminated our director of taxation in an effort to provide some targeted resources to assessment. And so we're trying to beef up our limited resources that we have to deal with the changes and challenges with respect to assessment, property assessment, and be more proactive as it relates to where the city wants to participate in that process related principally to appeals. So taxation was brought into Rick's division, which is now Financial Services, Taxation, and Rick is our corporate controller. Maria leads our IT division, and finally, Nicole leads our legal services and risk management group. With the transition of taxation to financial services, we saw an opportunity to align risk management with legal, and so we brought risk management under the leadership of Nicole. Overall, you'll see that the department's 2018 preliminary budget represents an increase of 1.5%. That was council's guideline. I just want to note that this is, in addition to 2017, corporate services brought forward a reduction in the levy of 1.3%. So I just want to thank the corporate services leadership team for meeting council's objectives around the budget guideline, as well as around cost constraints as it relates to the budget Terms of some of the pressures, I'm going to go through this division by division so that you'll get a better sense as to what's affecting and driving the divisions. As Chris's presentation, employee-related costs, given the services we provide, it's a significant pressure of about $570,000. Computer software represents a pressure, and what that really relates to, I mentioned previously, Oracle PeopleSoft. previously, Oracle PeopleSoft is changing the manner that they upgrade the system. So of that 195 is about $150,000 in order to adapt to the upgrades to Oracle PeopleSoft. So again, they're transitioning from three- to five-year upgrades to multiple upgrades each and every year. We have some loss of indirect funding, and so what that relates to is corporate services provide services to other departments. And as they change how they interact with corporate services, sometimes we lose funding. The principal factor to the $106,000 is public health ceased to provide some services around their dental program that reduced the accounts payable function for corporate services. We tried to mitigate this. We reduced in 2017, we reduced one F D E in accounts payable, but there continues to be a pressure of lost funding of about $106,000 net. Taxation fees, we have a number of fees within the taxation area section, and that's contributing relief of about $320,000. Some recoveries from provincial offenses administration, and finally, the marriage license revenue is improving, adding about $30,000 into our 2018 forecast budget. So I'll remain silent on that one since we're a day short of Valentine's Day. So I won't provide any personal judgment on that. In terms of clerks, again, you can see the composition and the makeup of clerks. There are three managers reporting up to the city clerk, no change in complement. There is an enhancement. We're going to get to the business cases, I believe, on Friday. So again, there is an enhancement. We have an interim temporary position that's supporting our records and freedom of information function, and that will be before you, I believe, at the end of this week. City clerks, you can see the overall budget is declining by 0.2 percent. As I mentioned previously, is marriage license revenue is improving. That's adding $30,000 to the budget, which is helping to offset the employee-related pressures of $27,000. Image processing, these are the microfiche function that clerk supports to other divisions. That's providing $11,000 in funding, and there are some pressures in our print supplies of about $10,000. Overall, you can see again that clerks is presenting a 2018 budget that represents a reduction of 0.2 percent. Some metrics, I'm going to go through the metrics by division. So in terms of freedom of information, what you're seeing and what you'll see in the business case, that'll be before you later this week, is some general increase in the activity around freedom of information requests. And you can see that since 2014, sorry, that the number of requests have increased, while marginally in 2017, this continues to be an area where based on our full complement, we're pressured. And again, you'll see a request to make what was a temporary position, a permanent position as part of the 2018 budget process. The number of requests to the city clerk, so the number of citizens interact with us directly through emails, you can see that's increasing since 2015 from 575 to 730. And again, in terms of those requests, that varies from council committee information bylaws and historical searches. I'm going to go back, sorry, I missed a key measurement with respect to the F O Y. With respect to the F O Y, one of the metrics that we measure is the number of requests that are completed within 30 days. And I just want to note that that has improved since 2014 from 79 percent to about 82 percent, 83 percent in 2015 and 16. And Rose has advised me that that will be updated for 2017 in the weeks to come. Council meetings, you can see this will vary from year to year, the number of council meetings that supports, or sorry, that clerk support. In advance, I want to thank Rose for scheduling a council meeting for tomorrow Valentine's Day. So now I'll have another excuse rather than just being absent-minded. So thanks, clerk. Thanks, Rose, for that. Marriage licenses issued, you can see, I mentioned previously, we're seeing more revenue, and that relates to an increase in number of marriage licenses that are being issued and supported through clerks. Major initiatives for clerks and moving into 2018, the introduction of online staff training modules on records management, email management, and privacy of information, that will be supported through clerks in 2018. The implementation of eScribe, agenda management software will be supported in 2018. And then finally, the preparation of our 2018 municipal election will be supported through clerks. Looking beyond 2018, recognizing again, we now have multi-year budgets. We want to present to you some sense as to what the major initiatives will be focused on beyond 2018 is expanded agenda management software. Again, expanding eScribe management software across the organization beyond 2018, as well as coordinate citizen appointments for committees after the election, 2018 election, and then recognizing that it's going to lead into the next election. So in 2021, we will have to start preparing for the 2022 municipal election. So just some sense as to what the major initiatives are beyond 2018. Move on to customer service and provincial offenses administration. This is led by Cindy, and you can see that there are three managers, customer contact center, the service channel manager, and our provincial offenses administration manager. You can see that the complement is not changing. It's just short of 76 and a half F D Es. Overall, the budget is increasing by 1 and 1/2 percent. And you can see that again, the principal driving factors are employee-related costs. And these are again, these are collective agreements, merit increases, entitlements that our staff have around employer, as well as government benefits. Facility costs are increasing slightly, and this is utilities, and maintenance costs of about $34,000. And there is a recovery from the provincial offenses administration that is mitigating some of the pressures in our customer service admin. Overall, again, 1 and 1/2 percent, about $68,000. Some metrics with respect to customer service, P O A. You can see that in 2017, the customer contact center responded to about 450,000 calls. And a few changes that were implemented in 2017. Water, part of the call handling pre-launch, water calls were consolidated into the customer contact center. That was effective September 20th. And between September 20th and December 31st, we saw about 7,000 calls related to water requests for turning on service, turning off service, and water meter installations and sewer backup calls. So again, that was one change, the consolidation of those calls into our customer contact center, as well as the consolidation of our transit calls into the customer contact center. And that was launched on November 28th to December, and between November 28th to December 31st, again, about 7,000 calls, and those calls were related to schedules, routes, and lost and found. I want to recognize that some of us may not have realized that those calls were transitioning, and I just want to recognize Cindy and her team, as well as the support provided by Hamilton Water during that transition and transit with respect to supporting the customer contact center with, again, with respect to transition of those calls. So in terms of the metrics, what you're seeing is 2015 was much higher. 2015 was, we had even greater extreme winter than we're having this year. This year maybe isn't an extreme winter, more of a normal winter, but 2015, we had a number of frozen water lines. That was a driving factor to that 2015 metric. But overall, you can see a slight uplift in terms of calls in 2017 of about 1.1 percent. With respect to P O A, early resolution, Part One schedule, you can see it remains relatively consistent, 15 percent to 17 percent. Municipal service center, the number of transactions, you can see it's declining from 2015 about 112 and 1/2 thousand to now about $106,000. Two factors to that is the transition of people's specific to animal services transactions, that's now in part being supported through the web. There are approximately, let me just look at my notes here, 12.3 percent reduction due to people now accessing their animal licensing requirements through the web. Property tax transactions, again, now that people are leveraging other forms of payment through PAP and through their bank accounts, there's a reduction of about 3 percent of the transactions at the municipal service centers with respect to people now looking at other opportunities of making payment. And provincial offenses administration finds there's a reduction of about 2.7 percent. And again, so it gives you some sense as to how the citizens are interacting with us. There is some migration from the municipal service centers, for instance, over to other channels, such as the web and through Cindy's division and through the service channel staff, as they're monitoring that, they're developing the dashboards, and it gives us a better sense on how the citizens, again, are interacting with us. P O A, number of charges filed, so we're continuing to see that downward trend in the number of charges filed. And this is across all of the charges with the exception of red light camera. So Hamilton Police Services, O P P, municipal law enforcement, and other agencies, we continue to see a decline in the number of charges that are being filed. Again, the only area we're seeing an increase is 14 percent in red light camera charges. So again, those are some of the factors contributing to that trend as it relates to P O A charges. Terms of major initiatives for 2018, continuing to focus on the implementation of the call consolidation launch, that will be a priority for 2018. Expanding the customer service training, I mentioned previously, there was some recognition for that training, there is some subsequent recognition. I won't get into this because I'd like to have a separate day where we can recognize staff with respect to some of the external award recognition of this great work. But that continues to evolve into now a process whereby staff across the organization, across the divisions, will be better supported in terms of how they interact with our customers. So again, we want to provide them greater tools, greater toolbox, and there's a six-step process that's being developed that will provide staff with those tools in terms of how to successfully interact with our citizenry. One of the changes that are affecting legal risk and P O A is the transition from their current facilities over to the courthouse. And so that, I believe, legal and risk are transitioning over in July, and Provincial Offenses Act in August. And so that needs to be supported to enable a smooth transition, not only for our staff, but for the citizenry in terms of how they interact with us. Continued, so beyond 2018, if we look at the three years of our four-year, multi-year budget, is continuation of call consolidation, and we anticipate all the calls that were identified as part of that review to be consolidated by the end of 2019. Delivery of our customer service experience through Cindy, as well as through other leaders across the organization, there is a corporate-wide effort to develop a process that supports a seamless payment experience. We were successful in terms of negotiating a relationship with Moneris, and we want to ensure that our citizens now have all of that technology functionality that they expect in terms of payment experience. And so that is evolving very quickly in terms of using handheld devices. And so again, we want to ensure that that technology is there for citizenry. Customer service strategy, again, working cross divisions across the corporation. We want to promote a seamless service experience. And again, there are a number of leaders in addition to Cindy and her team who are developing that process so that if anyone interacts with instance with our staff in animal services, they're going to have the same experience at municipal service centers or at our other counters. So developing across the organization that experience. And again, I just want to recognize Cindy and her team in participating in that exercise initiative. Financial planning, administration, and policy, you'll see that again, in 2017, we did some realignment. We moved the F and A function over to Brian McMullin's area, and that adds the addition of the three F and A managers to his organization. So now there are the five managers and our chief investment officer reporting to Brian. You'll also see note, I believe it was with respect to the farmer's market, there was reference to distributed staff. We continue to have some distributed staff with respect to public health, F and A, and I believe there's a distributed staff, sorry, in one of our other, in clerks, there's a distributed staff as well. So in terms of total complements, unchanged from 2017, restated 118, and you can see the ratio of staff to management, just short of 16 to 1. This division is presenting a 2018 preliminary budget of an increase of 2 percent. And as in the other divisions, the principal driving factor to that is employee-related costs, some facility expenses of about $23,000. There are some fine-tuning across the various accounts to try to mitigate the pressures, reduction overtime of about $19,000, reduction in use of temporary agency of about $39,000, and a reduction in training budget of about $11,000. So again, a 2 percent increase in terms of capital budget, you'll see a reference to a reduction in that 100 percent capital budgets is supported through the capital program, and that's why you're seeing that as a net levy, 2018 net levy zero. And as well in terms of investments, investments are supported through investment income, and I'll speak to that in a second when we get to the metrics. And so that's why you're seeing that as a favorable with a revenue source in 2018. Metrics, debt servicing costs as a percentage of property tax bill, that is increasing slightly in 2017 from 6.1 to 6.3 percent. We're going to likely see some pressure in terms of our debt servicing costs. If we look at 2017, the last time we did a debt issue, we did a debt issue of about $128 million, and we were able to issue that at 2.3 percent. As we start seeing pressure in terms of the cost to borrow, I would expect to see that debt servicing cost as a percent of property tax bill increasing slightly. Non-residential assessment as a percentage of total assessment, you've heard Chris speak to this often, you've heard Jason speak to this, this is a city strategic priority, is growing our non-residential assessment base. And what we're seeing is continued pressure on the residential assessment base, in part is it's the market that we're in. If you look at the recent announcement from Jason regarding building permits of about 1.36 billion, is you'll see a heavy reliance waiting on residential. So that unfortunately affects that racial of res to non-res reassessments affect that racial. And so while residential assessments increased through the last reassessment period of about 6 and 1/2 percent annually, is non-residential did not have that same experience. In fact, we saw a decline in the industrial sector as a result of reassessment. So again, the challenges we're facing is in terms of the pace of growth, and the non-res is not aligned to the pace of growth. is not aligned to the pace of growth in residential as well as trying to retain our existing non-residential base continues to be a challenge. Credit rating. I mentioned previously, we had a upgrade to our credit rating in two thousand and seventeen to double A plus with a stable outlook. That was actually our second upgrade in two consecutive years. In two thousand and sixteen, we also had an upgrade. We were double A positive outlook in two thousand and fifteen, and we had an upgrade in two thousand and sixteen to double A positive with a stable outlook. And again, two thousand and fifteen was an upgrade from two thousand and fourteen. So what you're seeing is a few factors that are affecting that is the strength of the province. We are a functioning animal of the province. When the province of Ontario strengthens, so too does our credit rating. What you're also seeing is the noted diversity in the city of Hamilton's economy. The fact that we're able to adjust to changes either in manufacturing, challenges around constraint in the institutional sector. So as senior levels of government have practiced some austerity, the fact that we had a diversified economy helped us in two thousand and fifteen and sixteen. So again, those are some of the changes affecting us in a favorable way with respect to credit rating as well as what's been noted is the cities. And I just want to recognize council in terms of our focus to financial performance. And so that was part of Stand and Empower's report, as was the fact that the city of Hamilton's introduced more policies and practices around financial controls. So for instance, our debt policy is one of the factors that contributed to our improvement in our credit rating. Gross percentage realized return on our investments. You can see some downward performance with respect to our investments. I can tell you two thousand and seventeen, I've looked at the preliminary numbers for two thousand and seventeen, I believe we're at two point seven nine percent for two thousand and seventeen. And so what does two point seven nine percent represent for the city of Hamilton in terms of overall investment income represents twenty-seven million dollars that we generated in two thousand and seventeen for investment income. I thought I'd get some reaction to that. So twenty-seven million dollars, how do we apply the twenty-seven million dollars? Four point one million of that goes to reduce our operating levy. So we apply four point one million to reduce operating levy, three hundred thousand to reduce the rate levy. That leaves us about twenty-two and a half million dollars that goes back into reserves. So I just want to recognize that favorable practice of putting those proceeds back into improving the sustainability of reserves rather than applying it, for instance, to reduce the overall levy, which some jurisdictions do. So what's affecting us or what has affected the return on investments is we're going to continue to see this variability. We're seeing the last two weeks, some changes, I would say some course correction with equity markets principally, foreign equity markets, the U.S. equity market. When you start to see those course corrections, what I would expect is some migration into the bond market that may affect some of our yield rates. So I think we're going to see some variability with respect to our investments. Recognizing that, I think we're ninety-eight percent reliant on bonds in terms of the city's investment strategy. The one area we have in terms of our equity funds is through MF away through one funds. And I believe that represents about two percent of our investment strategy. So nonetheless, a very positive performance in terms of two thousand and seventeen, again, just short of two point eight percent. Terms of two thousand and eighteen major initiatives, you heard previously in terms of the dashboards and the performance measures, we want to endeavor to develop a condition, financial condition index that'll provide the citizenry some sense of where the city is, of Hamilton is performing and trending as it relates to our financial performance. So that's something that we'd like to deliver for two thousand and eighteen. We want to continue to expand and enhance on our multi-year budgeting, which was launched in two thousand for this budget process, two thousand and eighteen, in addition to aligning it to the business plans and the strategic plan. We are in the midst of starting to update our development charge background study. There will be an interim development charge background study for two thousand and nineteen, and then an update to that in two thousand and twenty-one. And so what's affecting the need for an interim in two thousand and nineteen is we don't have the land budget from the province, those figures. So we will continue to plan out to twenty thirty-one for the interim development charge background study. And again, that has to be approved by council in July of two thousand and nineteen. And then we will update that when we have the land budget figures from the province and will extend it out to twenty forty-one for the updated DC background study in two thousand and twenty-one. So I'm jumping ahead a bit in terms of two thousand and nineteen to twenty-one. Major initiatives in addition to the DC background study, continuing to focus on the multi-year business planning forecast and our water billing contract with Elektra expires, I believe, in two thousand and nineteen. And we'll need some direction from council in terms of how to proceed with that service. So now moving on to financial services, taxation. You can see the overall complement is unchanged, just short of seventy, just short of seventy-seven. You can see the ratio of staff to management, again, about twelve to one. Rick has five managers reporting up to him, accounting services, accounts payable, receivable and financial applications, payroll and pensions, procurement services, and finally taxation. You can see a reduction in the two thousand and eighteen proposed or projected levy of about four and a half percent. And one of the factors affecting that is additional revenues as it relates to taxation. And those additional revenues are admin fees as well as some, sorry, tax, sorry, some transfer tax revenue. And the other is transfer revenue. So that find, that bottom number, transfer revenue, when water accounts who are billed by Elektra exceed the ninety-day period for arrears, they are transitioned over to a property tax arrear, over to taxation. To be captured as a property tax arrear, that generates some additional admin revenue for the city of Hamilton. That's that one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars at the bottom. Tax certificate revenue, we're projecting an increase of forty-nine thousand dollars, so an increase. Reminder notices, you'll recall, I think it was two thousand and fifteen, council approved increasing the number of reminder notices in an effort to try to affect our percentage of tax arrears. So that is providing some additional revenue. And finally, tax registration revenue, as we see an increase in development activity, we benefit through tax registration revenue and that represents additional seventy-nine thousand. There are some, again, loss of indirect internal recoveries. I mentioned previously that public health, the change in terms of public health no longer supporting one of the dental programs resulted in the reduction of their demand on accounts payable. While we reduced complement by one FTE in two thousand and seventeen, there's still a pressure as it relates to accounts payable and some of the other areas, but the impact is about seventy, or sorry, ninety-three thousand dollars. And finally, employee-related costs represent a pressure of about fifty-two thousand dollars. Metrics in terms of percentage of taxpayers enrolled in the pre-authorized payment plan, you'll recall previously at municipal service center, this was one of the impacts in terms of transactions at municipal service center as people move to pre-authorized payment plans is, again, there's an impact at municipal service centers. We continue to be at around that forty-four percent low higher than our comparators. Other municipalities are at about thirty-eight percent. So this is favorable in the sense of some reliance in terms of knowing that our taxpayers will be paying promptly. We have varied plans. We have ten-month plan and then we have two twelve-month plans depending on payment schedule, first a month, fifteen another month. So again, we have, I believe, five options as it relates to how citizens can pay their property taxes. And we're continuing to look at how to leverage automation with respect to taxation, turning into two thousand, focused on that in two thousand and eighteen. Tax arrears as a percentage of levies, so we continue to have a challenge with respect to tax arrears. Our comparator group has an experience of two point six percent. We are higher than that comparator group. I need to make it clear that ninety-nine percent of our taxpayers pay their taxes promptly. We have some challenges in some sectors and in some cases, it's, you see alignment with assessment challenges with tax arrears. So where some of our large industrial or commercial have some challenges, we're seeing correlation between assessment appeals and arrears. So where they're behind in taxes. So again, for two thousand and seventeen, while the data's not yet available, we would expect this to either be unchanged or migrate slightly higher. Again, the benchmark is lower in terms of the levy impact of this. And I know this has been discussed in the past, is because penalties and interest are so substantial, this actually generates approximately eleven and a half million dollars in revenue for us as part of the levy process. So again, we would encourage taxpayers to pay promptly, but for those who choose not to for various reasons, is the taxpayers are protected through the penalty and interest. And again, that generates about eleven and a half million dollars annually. Major initiatives for two thousand and eighteen is financial upgrades. I mentioned previously PeopleSoft, the upgrades to our PeopleSoft platform, and that's around web center and our general ledger, accounts payable, accounts receivable and purchasing, tax system, upgrading the city's taxation system, Veil Tech to a web version and update tax-related policies and procedures to find efficiencies and functions in terms of tax billing software and a online bid submission program. I spoke previously to the eBID, eSolutions is so allowing vendors to fulfill their transactions online with the city of Hamilton, but also what it allows is our city employees to do vendor evaluations electronically too. So less of a manual process and we'll have more accurate, complete, timely information as it relates to our vendor performance. Beyond two thousand and eighteen is, again, we're launching, doing some preliminary work around Kronos for two thousand and eighteen. And beyond that is, if supported by council's implementation of the corporate-wide strategy as it relates to Kronos, enhancing our online taxation services and finally reviewing or revising our fair wage policy. IT. You can see that Maria's team involves, includes three managers reporting directly up to Maria. Again, complements unchanged at about just short of eighty-four FTEs. And you can see the ratio at just short of twenty to one. In terms of IT, IT's preliminary eighteen budget is increasing by about four point three percent, three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And I mentioned previously is one of the driving factors is around business application software. That's the Oracle PeopleSoft. That represents a pressure of about one hundred and fifty thousand employee-related costs are increasing by one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. There's an impact, additional pressure as it relates to cost allocations, some additional investments in terms of security software. We're trying to better align our budgets to our actual experience and then some efficiencies in terms of operation, or sorry, infrastructure and operation software. Metrics, the percentage of malicious emails that are blocked. We continue to perform well in that ninety to ninety-two percent range for two thousand and sixteen and seventeen. And you can also see the expansion of public, private Wi-Fi users across our various locations. You can see in two thousand and seventeen, Q1, so these are each of the quarters, the number of users of our public and private Wi-Fi. We've expanded the number of facilities and there continues to be a demand to expand where the public can leverage city of Hamilton-provided Wi-Fi. We have situations where that Wi-Fi, that service is currently available for city employees. So that provides some opportunities to expand that service to our citizenry as well. Average network availability or uptime, you can see is the dependability of the system and this relates to the performance of IT staff as we continue to be at around that just short of a hundred percent. So again, in terms of downtime, I believe that represents, and I'll just refer to my notes, I thought it was, I thought it was somewhere in the area of six hours, six hours downtime. So again, overall, a very dependable support or service that's supported through IT. So I thank Maria and her team for that. We're growing more and more dependent on IT and the technology. So again, it's good to know that for the most part, it is available to us. Some of the two thousand and eighteen major initiatives, Maria and her team are leading a development of an IT strategy. They've reached out across the organization. They engaged all departments to develop an IT strategy for us to focus on in terms of implementation and starting principally in two thousand and nineteen to twenty-one. Supporting that IT strategy is enterprise architecture framework. Then, and that's a framework such that our management practices will be allowing to successfully implement that IT strategy. So again, two key pieces of work that were initiated in two thousand and seventeen and will continue to be developed in two thousand and eighteen. You'll recall and through the center, our discussion around centralization of services, IT was one of those services. And Maria's working across the departments in terms of identifying which positions may be centralized so that we can effectively develop on the IT strategy that is being established. Again, in terms of IT strategy, that work will continue beyond two thousand and eighteen into the peer two thousand and nineteen to twenty-one, as will the enterprise architecture framework. And then integrating our property information applications is, this continues to be an area where we can integrate the various platforms so that they can talk to one another and we can leverage information or data to try to improve in terms of how we deliver our Legal and risk management, you can see complement is unchanged at sixty, two thousand and seventeen to eighteen. And one of the changes I mentioned previously was a realignment of risk management. So our manager, risk management, now reports up through legal services. And in addition to that manager, there are three direct reports to Nicole. Legal services budget is increasing by one point nine percent. Principally employee-related costs, some reduction in direct recoveries. Some of the metrics for legal services is the number and value of procurement contracts. Legal services is one of the partners as it relates to our delivery of services that's supported through procurement, legal services. You can see the number and more importantly, the value of those contracts increasing significantly in two thousand and seventeen. The number growing from sixty-six in sixteen to seventy-four in seventeen, but the value of those are increasing. And so some of those big projects I mentioned previously, whether it's the P3 Canada biosolids, the Woodward wastewater treatment plant, the size of those projects are affecting that value. And I know that indirectly through the LRT office and Brian Boodoo, that will be an area of focus beyond two thousand and eighteen. Number of real estate transactions, you can see the breakdown between acquisitions, dispositions and tax sales. So again, there is a decrease in dispositions. And so, you know, again, where we are divesting, the city is divesting of properties that requires legal support in addition to the disposition of assets is the acquisition of assets. So again, that has increased in two thousand and seventeen compared to two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and fifteen. And finally, the number of litigation files resolved. And you can see an improvement in terms of the number of litigation files result as it relates to the files that legal services is supporting, an increase from two thousand and, or sorry, two hundred and nineteen to two hundred and forty in two thousand and seventeen. services is supporting, an increase from 2009 to 240 in 2017. Some of the major initiatives, again, the transition of staff, legal staff and risk management over to the former courthouse, continuing to support the departments around planning economic development initiatives as well as public works. So planning economic development initiatives will be pure rate as well as other initiatives such as the airport areas, sorry, airport district area, as well as support public works on key initiatives, and that would be the Dundas wastewater treatment facility as well as the procurement of waste collection contractor for 2018. And then for 2019, support implementation of our IT strategy, support planning economic development initiatives, and then once again, supporting public works with respect to their key initiatives. And that brings me to the end of my presentation. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, I just want to recognize and thank the Corporate Services leadership team again.
Mike, your intelligence and vast command of your department and the important role it plays never ceases to amaze me. Excellent presentation, well done. If you don't take Rose Catarini, Anna Upkarion, and Janie Hartwell out for lunch sometime to get them to reconsider, I will. Thank you, Mike. Okay, to my speakers list, Councilor Brenda Johnson first. Brenda?
Thank you, and thank you very much, Mike. That was very comprehensive. I have to say that your frontline staff, whether they're at the municipal center or here at City Hall, are absolutely phenomenal. I have witnessed more on more than one occasion, people coming in by paying for their parking tickets, their speeding tickets, their taxes, they're not in a good mood. But chances are, nine out of 10 of them are leaving with a much better mood, given the service that they've been getting at the counter. So thank you so much for everybody. One of the questions, if I can, through you to Cindy, speaking about the municipal centers, my understanding is that we keep asking you year after year, what about Service Ontario? What about Service Canada? Can we not utilize their services and bring them closer to the residents rather than them going to just Some of the sites that they have can be very challenging for people to get there, but when you look at some of the municipal services, lots of parking on bus routes, most of them, and it's just an easy in and out. So can you give us an update, please, on the Service Ontario, Service Canada projects?
Director Mercanti?
Through the chair, I can give you an update on both. So for Service Canada, we have conversations with them every year. As council knows, they are in our, some of our centers, so they're in Flamro, Dundas, and City Hall, so we do have representation of Service Canada key times during the month with regards to Service Ontario. They have a different business model. Every year, we do have a conversation with them with respect to their model. Right now, they are quite comfortable with their locations. They have one that's quite near Dundas that they're quite comfortable with, but those conversations will continue year after year. And if you'd like, I can also provide council an update during these budget proceedings.
And thank you for that. And my next question actually is for Rose. If you want to go to slide 17, that might, I think it's going to take you a while. Through you to Rose. Rose, this council is going to miss you terribly, just wanted to put that out there. When I look at the elections and I see that we're spending 600 and almost $90,000 or almost $80,000, one of the key things that I keep hearing from the residents at election times are the locations. Is it appropriate for the councillors to send you city-owned properties that would be far better use of our services for the polling stations than the ones that we have now?
City Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I know Tony and his team do an extensive review of locations in the polls, and there are certain criteria that has to be met, and I'm sure you're well aware. One of them, it has to be AODA compliant and a bunch of other services that Tony, you know, ensures that the locations do. I'm sure he's welcome to receive any suggestions. Those polling locations, as you know, are under the authority of the clerk to be selected.
Good.
But any suggestions that you might want to provide to the election office, I'm sure they'll be reviewed, but they are reviewed under that lens, just so you know.
Well, thank you for that, because in Glambrick alone, I know we've used churches, and I know there's a cost involved with that. We just have now Bimber Hall and Mount Hope Hall that have been totally upgraded, OADA, accessible, the whole bit. There's two free spots right there. Down in Winona, we have the Winona Community Center now. The seniors has presented its own challenges, which is just down the road, so if we move it over to the community center, again, it's a free location. And using those savings, we need to find one on the other side of the highway. That's really become cumbersome for some people. They just give up, because once they finally get off the highway, they're just heading home. They're not going to go to the opposite direction to where they need to go to vote. So I know we're trying to encourage people to vote. I know we've had this conversation in this council chambers a number of times, but there just seems to be some quick fixes that we can do that would just make it all the more easier, so now there is no excuse not to vote. We have Leona Station on the other side, we have, there's a couple of places on the other side, and maybe a cost involved, but we could be in fact saving money in the Glambrick area in order to get some costs, alleviate some costs to put into the Winona area so that people on both sides of the highway can have a convenient location. So those are my only two comments. Again, Mike, I don't know who does the hiring in your division, but I'm telling you, it really pays off at the long, in the long run. I've seen people come into the municipal center and they're angry, they've got their speeding ticket in one hand, a parking ticket in the other hand, and then they tell their story, how it was all accidental, and then they pay their fees, and the staff just take it all in, and they diffuse the situation, and the person leaves the building just okay. Not wonderfully happy and singing Mary Poppins songs, but at least they're feeling a lot better than when they came in. So congratulations to everyone.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I just want to piggyback off that. I want to thank the council for her very kind comments is, and we want to bring the appropriate staff forward at a future date to recognize them. That award that I quickly glanced over, I did that purposely, because I want to come back again at a future date and properly recognize all the staff across all the departments who worked on that in-house-developed training program that helps staff in terms of how to deal with those situations. So how do you de-escalate a situation with respect to where you might have an irate citizen in terms of a particular interaction? So again, it's great work from staff, you know, that was developed in-house, that was developed by frontline staff, and so at the appropriate time, I'd like to bring them forward to committee and recognize them.
Yep, and thank you very much. And I always think that it's so important to have at least two at each site, because you have someone who's irate that can come in, it can escalate very quickly. Of no blame of our staff, it just, the person has just come in on a roll, and he's not going, he or she is not going to stop. So it's really important. I think there's a lot of good support out there with Cindy and her staff, and Rose and her staff, and you as well. So again, I just, it's one of those jobs I wouldn't want to have, but I'm really grateful we have those in place that do a good job of it. Thank you.
Nice acknowledgement, Councilor Brenda Johnson. Thank you. Next on my speakers list, Councilor Maria Pearson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and Mike, kudos again. You do an excellent job. The slide presentations have been, I know there's been a bit of changes, but it's so much more concise and clear to actually follow along and see everything. So I really appreciate all the work that everybody's done to make this budget process especially easy to manipulate through. And certainly, I concur with Deputy Mayor on Rose and Janie. Whatever you can do, Mike, I know it would be difficult, but can't thank them, every single one of them enough, and all the staff that have done a tremendous job working here at the City of Hamilton, and I know just for myself and everything they've been able to help me with, and certainly the residents, I was much appreciated. So thank you. A couple of questions I did want to ask, Mike, and I went through, so I'm just going to make some notes. Right at the beginning, you mentioned about Valtech and making it easier, and we had a meeting a couple of days ago with regards to information that as councillors, we're not allowed at the current time. So could you just enlighten how this opportunity is going to come forward for the taxpayers to access information on a Valtech system? So to pay, to what, update their taxes, et cetera?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The system is populated through data provided to the city through MPAC. And one opportunity that clerks are developing is to have a kiosk available to the public to councillors' offices whereby if someone wishes to query a particular property, they'll be able to query through the assessment rule number and/or through the address of that property. So that is a tool that clerks is currently working on developing to support the public as well as to support staff and councillors.
So if I can ask them, what's the difference, what will be the difference in this to what we had as far as councillors originally to access, you know, information on tax, I call it tax fraud, is Valtech? So what's the difference? Because we're going under the tax, the rule number or the address?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, some of, some of the differences is providing it an adherence to what we're required to in terms of protecting personal information. And so through this particular tool, through the kiosk is we're preserving that requirement in terms of protecting personal information, but providing citizens as well as city staff and councillors with access of the assessment rule, which is public information. So the one, the one opportunity that clerk staff are trying to develop evolve is rather than member of the public or councillors leafing through the hard copy, the paper version of the assessment rule, is to provide that access through a kiosk.
Super, and I appreciate that, because, you know, we aren't allowed at the current time access to that information, so it'll be a great benefit, because it is a tremendous tool for my office and for my assistant in just verifying, you know, someone's name, an address, so you have the correct spelling, et cetera. So I appreciate that. Next question, Mike, you mentioned in the beginning as well, alignment of service standards that we have to implement 2019, 2024. By doing that, is that going to, as far as capital assets, is that going to mean in addition to the capital, capital budget that we would implement every year?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it could. So this was Bill 6. You may recall that Public Works through Sam Sidaway, supported by Brian McMullin's area, brought forward this information early on into the budget process. So this was a legislation that was approved by the province. Chris alluded to the fact that we saw a flurry of legislative regulatory changes from this provincial government over the last few months. Bill 6 was approved. I believe we're still waiting for the regulation, some of the regulations around Bill 6. Time lines were changed slightly. 2019 council, the new council in 2019 will have to approve a policy, and then I believe starting in '21, we need to start approving service standards. So let me use an example that may be more recent, is our general manager of Public Works, Dan, presented as part of his budget presentation, the road index, and you'll call the reference to being 62 in terms of condition and index for roads. That, for instance, would have to come before council to, for council to set the service standard. If that service standard were to remain at 62, that remaining at our current state is still going to require, I think somewhere in the area of $28 million in additional capital investments annually. So that's the exercise. It's setting a service standard and then aligning the financial resources to those standard. Part of our challenge will be the overall funding envelope. And so, you know, there's many factors that are going to have to be accounted for. One of the factors, there's senior levels of government. So as senior levels of government bring forward their next phase of infrastructure funding, and as they determine what their priority areas are, that will affect this council and other councils across the province in terms of our capital programs, because in order to leverage some of that funding, we will have to participate, and effectively, you are participating in provincial and federal priorities.
And appreciate that. You just touched on another point then, so, and I've asked this at previous budgets in Public Works, certainly as you're aware, Mike, in Stony Creek, we used to have a program where we did, we did our design and works on projects, so that when these P3 funding opportunities came forward, we were ready to go. And I know we've had some issues with that here in Hamilton, so how do we stand now as far as projects, especially if it has to do with our capital assets?
Mike?
So in order to, I think, so through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think what the council is referring to is how do we participate if there is a announcement from the province or federal government? So we know there are going to be certain envelopes. So we know that through the next federal budget, they're going to speak to four, four funding envelopes. One will be around transit, one will be around green initiatives, which there was previously the Clean Water Wastewater Fund, which we leveraged, was part of that previous initiative as will any initiatives that may be energy efficiency initiatives or greenhouse gas initiatives, so that would fall under that second funding envelope. Third will be social recreational, so we expect some funding around housing, and hopefully some, while it may be marginable, some funding for recreation centers or community hubs. And the fourth one, I don't expect we will be able to leverage, that will be targeted to rural communities, so those with a population of less than 100,000. So knowing that the federal government will be announcing three principal priorities, those three principal priorities is, will be relatively well-positioned in terms of moving to the next phase of our transit maintenance storage facility, as well as the rolling stock that will be required, for instance, for year five of the transit strategy. The question will be the timing. So recognizing that our maintenance storage facility, we wouldn't be in a position to leverage that in 2019, hopefully there'll be flexibility to say if the City of Hamilton really wants to participate and leverage in that next phase of moving that, that major project, is we would require that funding, for instance, in 2021 or so. So, sorry, a long answer. I think we are positioned in terms of those priorities, and I'm not aware of any other programs that the provincial, federal government are contemplating as it relates to infrastructure out of, outside of those defined programs.
Thank you for that. Next question, you mentioned about the competitive tax classes. Where do we stand currently, because you didn't go into the commercial and industrial taxes and
Yes, so through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and we'll, we'll provide additional information when we bring our tax policies at the very end of this budget process, is we have some challenges, and you would have heard me say this previously, is our large industrials are protected class. It has been a protected class since amalgamations. But in addition to that is our multi-res. So not our new multi-res, which, you know, we've adopted a new multi-res tax class, but our multi-res, and not only our multi-res, the province in 2017 protected multi-res class across the whole province in an effort to better determine how to better support that class again across the province. They did that in 2017, and we've been advised that will be a protected class in 2018. So the impact that has is you cannot flow through levy increases to that class, nor can you flow through reassessment changes to that class. So in effect, what that does is transfer some of the burn on to the residential class that might have been absorbed in the multi-res classes. So that was a provincial policy change in 2017 that's continuing in 2018, and we're hoping in 2019, they move in terms of what they might ultimately do with respect to that class rather than continuing just to protect them on a go-forward basis. So in terms of tax policies, that will impact us for 2018. And then as this council is very familiar with, is because of reassessment, now we are in year two of the current four-year reassessment period. We saw that outside of farmland, the one class that exceeded the other classes in terms of increased valuation was residential. Residential went up about 26 percent, so about 6.5 percent annually. Commercial increased, but not at the same pace as residential. I think commercial was somewhere around I think commercial was somewhere around 4.5% and multi-res declined and, sorry, industrial declined, apologize, industrial declined. And so we have some challenges. I spoke a few weeks ago to some of the challenges around appeals, assessment appeals in the commercial industrial. What just adds to that in the case of industrials, the fact that that class as a whole has benefited from a reduction in valuation through the reassessment period. So that just further creates some of our challenges when I had the metric up there with respect to res non-res as a ratio. That's just contributing to moving us in the wrong direction with respect to that metrics. And recognizing, you know, we've said this previously and Chris has spoken to it historically, was to go from 13% reliance or 13% in terms of non-residential to 14% was three additional Ursular Mattells or 27 Canada Bretts. And so we know the challenges of bringing one of those entities to the city is just to move that yardstick 1%. That just gives council some sense of the magnitude of what's required in terms of our economic growth.
Thank you. So Mike, just to quantify, you said that for multi-res currently, and it's frozen by the province, there will be, there are no levy increases, so whatever, we set on a tax percentage this year, they will not be affected by?
Yes, so through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, they're a protected class. So with the respect to the, so I'll call them the traditional multi-res in that we developed, council approved, the province enabled and council approved a new multi-res tax class and rate to try to incent multi-res. So we continue to be able to pass on to that class, but that historic multi-res class, and I believe our, that class is protected. And they were protected in '17 and will continue to be protected in 2018.
Thank you for that. On slide 36, and I know it's nominal, you mentioned that there's facility charges at 23,000. What would they have been for?
So through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, they would be, so in terms of our guidelines around energy, it would have been, I believe, our hydro guideline was 5%. It would be principally our hydro or natural gas. It's not necessarily, I don't believe in these situations, it's a change in footprint. It's just those inflationary pressures.
And I wanted to get that clarified because employee-related is, we understand, but facilities is also an inflationary increase. You mentioned the debt servicing, that where we're going, and that's, I didn't write the slide number down about debt servicing. Okay, so we're up a bit. Will there be, do we anticipate a major or another jump in that with the addition of service or the, sorry, the freezing of taxes to seniors?
So through you, Mr, yeah, so through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, I don't expect those programs, the evolution of, if the question is through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, the tax deferral program and the seniors' tax credit program, they will not impact our debts, our debt levels. I think what will impact this debt levels is if the Bank of Canada increases their borrowing rates, is you're going to see that cascading impact. So as I mentioned, 2017, we did our about $128 million issuance at 2.65%. We're likely going to be, I think if we did a similar issuance today, we'd be at about 3.2%. So we're going to continue to see that ratio moving in the opposite direction, but it's really a reflection of inflation, I think, in part. And so as the Bank of Canada looks to introduce some monetary policies to try to affect inflation, unfortunately, our experience is like homeowners. So when homeowners face higher mortgage rates, so do we face higher cost to borrow.
Right, thank you. And just a couple more points, and I'm not going to ask you about it, but I was disappointed when you mentioned in your slide about the 14% increase in red light camera charges. So that's discouraging to think that we're, not discouraging in the sense we're making revenue off it, but it's discouraging that there are drivers out there that are just being complacent about the red light cameras.
And so through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, I think one factor would be as we increase the introduction of new facilities, but I know as councillor Jackson has said previously, it is a unique opportunity for the city of Hamilton to generate some revenue, reinvest that in part to try to affect those behaviors, and recognizing those behaviors will continue is, you know, again, using those funds in part to try to positively affect those behaviors is an opportunity we didn't have previously.
Don't doubt that, it's just concerning because I, you know, if anything, that's what we hear in all of our neighborhoods in the ward and throughout the communities is the speeding, et cetera, and it's just discouraging. On the last note, and this is a good one, is on slide 65, you mentioned the real estate transactions that were down in tax sales for 2017. That's really good news. We're down to three, I think, properties?
Yeah, so through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, I think, again, this is a reflection of where Hamilton sits in terms of economic activity. And so where in previous years I would have spoken about some problem properties on Hess Street or, you know, I'm trying to think of the other one by our Public Works Yard, is again, those have been resolved, and so I think what you're seeing is the relatively strong real estate market is showing more interest in what otherwise would have been brownfield or impaired properties.
Excellent, thank you. And with that, Mr Deputy Mayor, I'll close. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to ask all the questions I have. And Mike, again, excellent, excellent presentation. It's, you've made it so simple here to understand and be able to get the information back later because that's the other part, is you can go back to your office and go, well, what did it actually mean? So it's all there. And to, again, Roseanne and Janie, thank you so much for everything you've done, and wish you the best in your retirement. Thank you.
Terrific questions and commentary, councillor Pearson, at least I benefited from that. Next on the speaker's list, councillor Whitehead, please.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Michael, a member of one of the presentations a while ago, and probably through the leadership of our city manager, he used that magic word on me, was metrics. And so we're using a lot more metrics, which is more understandable and easier to present to the taxpayers, so I really appreciate that emphasis. I also want to thank our departing staff, Rose and Isabelle, incredible staff, people developed, they're professionals in the commitment and dedication to the work, was second to none, and they were deeply appreciated by myself and my assistants and those I serve. So I wish them the best in their endeavors in the future. Slide 38, if you can go to that. So Mike, what you need to understand is, you know, it's always my understanding is that when you improve your credit rating, that has a tangible impact on the cost of borrowing, but you didn't identify what that tangible benefit is. So can you express to me what benefit did we get from that? From a borrowing perspective?
Yeah, so through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, I would say there's two benefits. Is one is interest from the marketplace in terms of your offering. So as we develop to be a more mature organization is what we want to do is look at other markets. So we've been very focused on the traditional Canadian market is, you know, as our credit position improves, you may get interest from foreign markets in terms of leveraging. I think in one year, we did have some issuance, some placement of an issuance in the foreign market. So that's one benefit. The second one is a little challenging in terms of improved cost to borrow. So what we saw transpire in '16 and '17 was offsetting our improved credit rating were increases in the Bank of Canada's borrowing rate. And so that offset what we might have otherwise realized in terms of improvement in terms of cost to borrow. So what would that cost to borrow? That might have been, you know, somewhere three, five basis points improvement in terms of cost to borrow. But again, what's offsetting that is as the Bank of Canada tries to affect inflation is as they increase the cost to borrow is our cost to borrow is increasing as well.
So arguably, through the deputy mayor, there's cost avoidance regardless because everything's a wash and increases, but the fact that you have a credit rating increase had a tangible benefit of X and it could be quantified through either cost avoidance or direct benefit. So it'd be nice if that was quantified because to express to the community, the advantage of these kind of credit ratings is difficult enough to articulate, but if we can quantify the benefit, it would be helpful.
Yeah, so through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, we can use an example of our last issuance, $128 million to identify what that would mean in terms of what, unfortunately, you won't fully mitigate. So while we're talking about three to five basis points, recognizing the Bank of Canada's increasing the cost to borrow by 50 basis points, 75 basis point, and will continue to increase it, is we're able to reduce some of the impact of that.
Appreciate. When I'm looking at the debt servicing cost and rising, and then you talked about the unknown variables based on, you know, full employment or hot economy and how that may impact on increase in interest rates and so forth. But what'd be interesting for me is to understand with our comparable communities, and that's the lens I didn't see up here, if there was a piece missing, would be on some of these benchmarking pieces, how we compare with our comparables.
So through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, I know that we have that information and we can circulate that information. We compile it, for instance, principally to look at our capital budget process because that really affects how we financially support our capital budget. So we can provide, I would say that on our tax-supported side, it was actually one of the observations from Sten and Empores. Currently, we have a relatively low tax-supported debt reliance. What's really affecting our debt profile is our rate-supported, our water wastewater program, principally the expansion at the wastewater treatment plant, and our development charge-supported debt forecast. So as we continue to have expansion, which is very positive, is that too affects our reliance on debt in order to service and support that development. So again, I would suggest on our tax-supported, you know, again, that was a favorable observation where we have some, where we need to monitor is on our rate-supported and DC-supported.
Appreciate, and I wasn't going to mention development charges, but now that you have, on benchmarking, I don't know if there's a benchmarking regards to how much per unit or whatever that measurement is, where are we, again, compared to our comparables in the city of Hamilton, is in the lower range, medium range, or higher range compared to other jurisdictions?
So we do have that, and we'll be bringing that forward as part of our update to the DC bylaw. So we have comparators for single detached units for residential, we have comparators for commercial square footage, based on square footage, and industrial. So in terms of industrial, this council and previous councils have made it a concerted effort to try to incent our industrial activities. So right now, we're, our full rate is just in excess of $19 and we're at $11, $12 a square foot. So again, there are going to be jurisdictions, so if I look at a London who, my understanding, do not have development charges in an effort to further incent industrial, we will be higher. But then if we look to the GTA communities is we're going to be lower. So we will have that information for both commercial, industrial, as well as residential. When we compare ourselves to the GTA, we are going to be very favorable with respect to residential. I can suggest that based on conversations I'm having with my counterparts who are in the midst of their updates. And I think we're seeing that in interest in the city of Hamilton in terms of the residential. So property purchasers are very cognitive of the overall cost of property, and that includes not only the, for instance, property tax burden, but as they look to purchase new housing stock, is development charge is going to affect Hamilton's competitiveness in terms of new housing stock. We will have that information, not only for the DC Steering Committee, but for council so that you have a sense when we bring forward that DC background study, where we compare with that broader comparator group, not only residential, but commercial, industrial, and institutional too. And I finally want to say is beyond development charges, and I know we'll get into DC tax policies as part of the DC background study, and I'm sounding like a bit of a broken record around this, is we are very generous when it comes to development charge exemptions. We have 21 discretionary and statutory development charge exemptions. The CDF Hamilton offers 21. And so we need to review those as part of our DC background study. And so that includes all sectors. We provide exemptions across all sectors. So again, I would just leave that with you as well.
Sure, and we'll have, it'll be a fulsome discussion around that. I know that other communities were able to use development charges for a greater array of things than Hamilton. It was much more restrictive, which ties our hands in regards to meeting needs in our community, especially growth-related needs. So that's another discussion. So the, you talked about, and when I think about before NAFTA, when Hamilton was in, you know, had that ambitious label, we had a lot of textile industries, we had a lot of industry in Hamilton. And as a result of globalization and whatever the arguments are, I'm not going to associate to anyone, there was a number of them that left. But that time, if I recall, it was estimated that the assessment base was, you know, like 60-40 or 70-30 in commercial industrial versus residential. Now that whole scenario's flipped, is that correct?
So, so I, short answer it is, I would say that 60-40 might have been the former city of Hamilton. So I think sometimes we confuse the new city of Hamilton with the former city of Hamilton experience. Absolutely, former city of Hamilton had a greater reliance and a greater benefit in terms of leveraging the commercial and large industrial residual industrial class. So again, when you look at now the new city of Hamilton, absolutely, that ratio you can see is in terms of 2017, we were hoping to move that in the opposite direction is to have that increasing from 13% to something greater than 13% in terms of non-residential. But there's a few factors. The building activity, again, is we're seeing a heavier weight to residential. In some ways, that's very positive because when you bring people into your community, they will demand commercial, either food services, financial services, there is a spin-off to that. But as well as, as I keep mentioning, is the, a bit of erosion in that commercial industrial tax class through reassessment is contributing to that as well.
So on that chart then, it'd be interesting because we've, especially heavy industrial has been capped and protected for years. And you, you know, and you would think over all these years with service levels and cost and so forth, that at some point, you're going to meet that average, that industrial average across the province, yet we haven't. And I'm not sure why. That's the first part of the question. And the second one is, again, comparable communities, how do we stack up in regards to this challenge?
So through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, we do have our comparator group, we have this information, it's compiled by a third party, it's our tax competitiveness study that's facilitated through BMA. And I think of our comparator group, if I look at it, I was looking at this information recently, we probably have only three or four who are below the city of Hamilton with respect to this ratio. So communities that you would think would have a greater reliance, if I look at Oakville, Oakville's in a slightly more favorable position to us. I look at Oakville as more of a residential, but when you look at this ratio, they're actually, they have a higher availability reliance on non-residential. So I think in part is coming back to your previous observation or comment, councillor, is it's not about just growing the non-residential, but retaining the non-residential base we have here. And as long, especially in that large industrial, if those stakeholders are not reinvesting into their facilities, is we're going to continue to see that erosion. So it's so important for the Ursular Mattells, the Stalkos to invest, reinvest in their facilities because then we retain that economic performance. Otherwise, recognizing assessment in part is based on economic obsolescence. If owners of these facilities are not investing into the technology, investing into those facilities, we'll continue to see this erosion. facilities, we'll continue to see this erosion.
Yeah, and I think that's why I'm glad that I initiated, we now have the Southern Material Economic Development Agency that actually helped me believe in that and I kind of brought it to establish here in the City of Hamilton. The, but I like to see the comparisons, I mean, often we hear about what's happening in Kitchener-Waterloo, London, so I love to see how they stack up on this challenge that we're having in regards to closing the gap between residential and non-residential assessment. So if you can forward that to us, that'd be great.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we can, and I know the ratio hasn't changed very much. You would have heard Chris, our city manager, mention, you know, our comparator group, it's 17% on average, non-residential, 83% residential, so we're below that 17% to 83% ratio, but we can provide you that comparator group.
Great. Please, slide 47, and thanks for the answers, Mike, because it's really helpful. Is it Mike or Michael?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it's, just to make my mother proud, it's actually Myle, so, but I go by Mike.
So I, okay, and again, I think you sort of touched on it, I want to flush a little more out, so you have the 26 Dean Municipal Benchmark at 2.6%. I was listening very carefully in what you were saying in regards to why ours is higher than that benchmark. Can you expand on that, because I still have trouble understanding it.
So I think there's a couple of factors, so through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think there's a couple of factors that affects our experience in terms of tax arrears. I think some property owners will fall into arrears as a cash flow strategy. So where they have other debts or oweings is property taxes, one that they know they can defer for up to three years before municipalities start to take some action in terms of registering those properties. So I think that's one factor. There are some who simply fall into arrears as part of their cash flow management. What we know affecting some of, affecting, that affects some of these numbers are large industrial. So, you know, in the past, we've reported in terms of challenges, whether previous through the CCAA process, Westelco, National Steel Car, these large entities who fall into arrears very much affect these numbers, these ratios. So I think that Hamilton's experience in terms of some of those large industrial affect these numbers as well. Where we saw some increase in, I think, 2017, where I'm starting to look at the data, is residential. I'm starting to see some uptake in terms of the residential tax arrears. So we'll have to better understand what's triggering some of the residential properties in terms of falling into a higher number of arrears. So again, we compared to that benchmark, I think are affected in part from our large commercial-industrial, and I just want to recognize that council-approved, I think it was 2015, we tried to affect this ratio. So it's a double-edged sword with respect to this ratio. One is, is you don't want your property owners to fall behind, you want them to be timely in terms of their property tax obligation, but at the same time, our penalties and interests are such that we benefit to it. So again, about $11.5 million that we build in to reducing the levy as it relates to the principal and interest charges. So again, what we tried to do and what council-approved 2015, we increased the amount of notices that we provide to property owners in a way to try to remind them of their obligation in terms of property debt. That had some impact, positive impact, immediate positive impact, but for 2017, we're starting to see some trending again to residential, an increase in residential, that we need to better understand.
Well, I appreciate that. So things like cash flow, I would think that would be not inconsistent just in Hamilton, that would be a practice that would be experienced in other jurisdictions. So what I really want to understand is what is unique about our circumstances that create this pressure, and that's what I'm wanting to try and understand. So I thank you for that. And the last one is slide 56.
And just as I'm moving through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, taxation staff actually prepare a standalone report on tax rear, so we'll have some of that detail as to what's driving some of those, so we'll be preparing that in 2018.
Counselor?
Yeah, so, you know what, Ms. Chair, I think I'll take this one offline, because it's more unique and I don't think I need to bore my colleagues with it. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the answers, Mike.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. Next on my speakers' and questioners' list, Counselor Doug Connolly, please.
Thank you, and great presentation, I always enjoy it, you do a great job, and your department. Just some quick, easy questions. We're at AA+. What's it take to get to AAA? Or is there anybody in the province that actually reached that? And what would it take for us to do that?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, there are jurisdictions who are AAA. I would describe those jurisdictions as being less mature, so having less of an infrastructure backlog, you know, some, they don't necessarily face some of the same challenges of a mature municipality. Some of those jurisdictions might have, I'm not suggesting they did, but they might have benefited from provincial funding because they went through a growth period in the 70s. So absolutely, there are some who are AAA. For the City of Hamilton to migrate to AAA is, I think, our infrastructure deficit and the fact that we cannot defer that infrastructure deficit, we can't put off investing into infrastructure. That's going to be a major barrier to the city in terms of affecting, continuing to affect our credit rating. I think a AA+ with a stable outlook is very positive for the City of Hamilton, given our recent history, and I would say it really speaks to where this community has transitioned to, given where we were, just simply if you think back to 20 years ago, some of the challenges that we faced 20 years ago.
Is there an advantage for people paying monthly, overpaying one shot or whatever? Is there any advantage to the customer?
So, so through the, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would suggest whether taxpayers use the 12 payment, 10 payment option, the one benefit that it provides them is from a budgeting perspective. So we saw it even on the hydro bills, as the province recognized, when you move to monthly, it allows homeowners to better plan for those obligations. So a 12-month, a 10-month, there are some property owners who still prefer installments, and so I would suggest it really depends on one's personal financial situation, and some people prefer the PAT program because it's automatic. They don't need to be triggered by the reminder notices or installment notices. So I would suggest it really varies on individuals' preferences, personal preferences. But the biggest benefit is in terms of budgeting, managing your budget.
Yeah, we actually pay by the month, and we like budgeting like that, but is there any incentives we could do just to get people on that program? Like, it'd be nice if we had 75% of the people on this program.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it's a good question, because I know one municipality, I did look at one municipality, and so they'll have a draw or some sort of a, you know, one-year free property taxes to one household who participates in the program. So we could look at that, you know, I think some of the other changes we're looking at, that the team are looking at in terms of technology, the web platform, and giving homeowners other options in terms of beyond the five that we currently offer homeowners, is if you give property owners more options, they may migrate to some of those other payment options.
And my last question, and I don't know if it's got to do with you or not, so I'm not lying to say so. I'm just wondering about the elections coming up, and I want to know what the status is, and maybe the clerk could talk. I'm sure they're working on the new ward program, but is the challenge that might be out there, is it's, do they have so many days to challenge it, or is the challenge period over, or is it still out there making a little bit of news? And if it's out of line, I don't mind talking to Nicole privately, but if you could answer anything for me, clear it up, I would appreciate it.
City Solicitor or the clerk, please, or both?
Through you, Mr. Deputy. So at this point, we have had no appeals or challenges of the ward boundary decision, and so we are proceeding on the basis of the board's decision.
And is there a limited time they have to appeal? I thought it was February 8th, but it's a number that's in my head and I don't know if it's even a legal number, but is there a time period that they have in order to apply for that?
I appreciate the question, Counselor, especially in light of recent stories in the media. City Solicitor?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So the appeal period for a decision was 15 days from the date of the decision. Any other challenge that may be available under a judicial review, there's no specific deadlines for those, but certainly the closer we get to needing to provide that information, the more challenging that becomes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Just, I like to get it in black and white rather than a little bit of gray in there, that's all, but I guess we can at this point. Thank you, that's all my questions, thank you.
Thanks so much, Counselor Connolly. And now Mayor Eisenberger, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Mike, for your presentation. I just wanted to say that all of the presentations have been really, really brilliant, actually, the level of detail and information that we're sharing, which most of us should know and certainly are reminded of, but certainly for the public at large to get that level of detail has been fantastic. I just wanted to touch on, you know, the economic development piece, and you know, I'm harking back to five or six or seven years ago, when we understood where the challenges were in terms of growth and commercial-industrial growth, and we actually made a point of investing in our economic development department for that very reason, is to try and work towards, you know, looking for those new job opportunities and business opportunities that actually is going to turn that around. So it's very important, I think this council has been very supportive of that process for that very reason, that we understand that there's a deficit now in terms of where we were at old city or, you know, former municipalities, there's a deficit from where we were to where we are today, historically going back, you know, potentially 30 or 40 years. And jobs is critically important, and that's why we've also invested, this is a statement, you don't have to answer any of this, it's also why we invested in McMaster Innovation Park and are so keen on the health, the healthcare research that's going on, all of it potentially leading to innovations and product being made right here in Hamilton. So it's an issue that I think has been a predominant focus of our staff team, it is one of the top priorities in terms of strategic issues that we need to focus in on as an organization, and I think we've made some really significant headway, which I think is particularly positive. But it's also, you know, a stark reality that, I think it was Neil at one point said, that if we wanted to get back to a 60-40, you know, or 70-30, it would take, I can't remember what the line was, 15 or 16 Stalkos or DeFascos. So do you remember the comparison? I think it's...
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, just to move that 13% to 14%, would be three Arcelor-Motels at that time, seven US Steels, and it's actually 28 Canada Breits, just to move 1%. And so we just share that just to manage expectations, because, you know, to migrate from a 13% or 12% reliance to 40%, that would be a whole new evolution in terms of our transformation in terms of economic development. And I would just also add that...
Oh, sorry I asked, actually.
Yeah, I would also add that, you know, we are having the conversations at our SLT table to ensure that you're seeing this cross-development across the department. So sometimes we're focused on tax policies, and we need to ensure that our tax policies align with our economic development strategy, that aligns with the strategic plan, we're looking at, you know, ensuring that we're able to measure and evaluate how effective our tax policies, whether those are our DC development charge policies or our tax policies, we're growing more mature in terms of trying to assess those policies.
Yeah, so thanks for that answer, Mike, and you know, it was worse than I thought, but the reality is that it is a large mission that we have to stay focused on for a long period of time. This is not something that gets resolved in a year or two. This has got to be part of our long-term strategy, and it is for the City of Hamilton and has been for this council, and I think that's the right steps for us to take. So I appreciate all that, I think it's important that we manage those expectations, but continue to focus on looking for those opportunities that can bring new commercial-industrial dollars here, and you know, I know that Counselor Ferguson asked about the US Steel lands, it's why the potential of that and turning that back into commercial-industrial capacity is so very important for us moving forward. And we're on top of it, and it is, we're all frustrated by the pace, and the province has been less than forthcoming in terms of how they're proceeding on this, but we are making inroads and understanding who's on the land co. Certainly, we've had some communications with some of the members, even though they haven't met, and we've put together as a community a pretty positive plan that I think could be a model that could be utilized. So I think all of those steps are going to hold us in good stead going forward, but you know, the US Steel lands is a real clear and present opportunity for us. So thank you for the presentations, they've all been sterling and detailed and I think very informative for the public at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next on my speakers' list, Counselor Ferguson, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to echo what the mayor said about the quality of the presentations, and yours was stellar, Mike, I'm struggling to find one question because you answered the ball, and, but every presentation so far has been, here's what you just bought, here's what you're going up, and we're for the most part within the council guideline, and here's what you're buying next year, and that's a very neat way to present it to us, because that's what we have to face. I've got all these documents here, but I'm out speaking to the community, I'll be pucking them from these records and using them in my presentations throughout my community. I did find one question, though, Mike, and so... Through you to Mike, slide 29.
So as I'm finding it, if the councillor found a question, it's because my staff, my team have developed good notes that I didn't read properly. So if you have a question, it's a reflection of my performance, I'm sure they have the answer for you.
To his talent, he adds modesty, we appreciate that, General Manager.
So number of POA charges filed, and these are enforcement issues, this is trying to make our community safer, and they're all, they've been declining now for four straight years. And so I suspect that's animal control, bylaw, and police. Have I got that right so far?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would add OPP, and so we actually have dashboards now, so through Cindy and our Provincial Offenses Administration Office, they actually have now a dashboard, they're measuring this on a regular basis, so they are able to tell me that it's absolutely Hamilton Police Services, bylaw, OPP, the uptake is 14% uptake on the red light camera. Cindy, I'm sure can expand in terms of, I believe with police, we were at around about 53,000, and we were at about 63,000 a few years ago, but Cindy can...
It's down about 20% then, that's going to go next to the police, because I raised this with the chief last year. It's a good objective measurement for his performance review, and I showed him, hey, you're heading south. And you know, he's a kinder, gentler sort of person, and that sometimes can cascade down through the organization. And I actually talked to someone who was stopped by a police officer recently for speeding, and he says, well, your board chair, our board chair is pushing us to put more POAs out there. And so clearly Eric took it back and cascaded it down through the organization. So it'd be nice to know how police is trending over the last four years, and bylaw, and animal control, and OPP, because to me, I, you know, it's being kinder, not issuing tickets, but it's also putting our public at risk because somebody's breaking the law. They're blowing red lights, they're going for speeding, they're careless driving, impaired driving, so it'd be nice to have that breakout, to know, do we turn to Ken Leeder's, do we turn to Chief Gert, or do we go to the OPP to find out why we're trending south as we see in that report?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I know that we have those metrics, and I can actually ask Cindy, because it is part of, I just, while Cindy's preparing, it's important to note, and I appreciate the feedback in terms of the metrics, and I think this really speaks to Chris's efforts to ensure that all the departments adopt one framework, and that's the results-based accountability framework that we've adopted. But over and above what's before you today, it's important to know that there are dashboards that management have access, that we are starting to develop so that management... that management have access, that we are starting to develop so that managers can actually see what's transpiring to trigger some of these questions. So, so I know Cindy has the numbers, and as well as, I'm very concerned with OPP because when I look at the change in terms of OPP charges, they are more dramatic than the change in relative...
Does OPP lay charges for speeding in Hamilton boundaries, does that revenue come to the city? Or what kind of charges would OPP do to...
Director Mercanti?
Through the, through the chair, with regards to OPP, their fines actually do come to the city of Hamilton.
Can't hear you.
Sorry, their fines do come through the city of Hamilton as far as the revenues are concerned, and they pass...
On the 400 series highways, their fines?
Not on the 400 series highways. These are more sort of on the local areas. I will say that for the trend for OPP, there has been, I'll say, an unfavorable trend for the last four years. We're happy to provide you with a detailed trend on all of the...
What kind of percentage, so, unfavorable trend? 5% or 50%?
So, for the OPP, between 2016 and 2017, we realized a 40% reduction in fines. Prior to that, if you were to look across all the years, you saw between 2015 and 2016 an 8% reduction in fines for the OPP.
Counselor?
And what's that mean in total revenue for POAs? What percentage of OPP of the total revenues?
Cindy?
So, the OPP account for 4% of the total revenues for POA.
That's small. What about Hamilton Police? How have they trended?
Cindy?
Through the chair. Hamilton Police Services, I'll talk about 2016 to 2017, is a 7.3% reduction in fines with respect to 2015 and 2016, a 0.9% reduction. They account for 68% of all OP, or POA revenue.
Okay, so I would appreciate through you, Mr. Chairman, to Cindy, could you just email that to me so the next time everyone in the board does the next performance review of the chief, we can lay this out so he has it in front of him because he likes to cascade it.
Through the chair, absolutely.
And she'll be very helpful with that. I think that's all my question. What about, how did we do on bylaw?
Cindy?
Oh, by the way, Counselor Pearson asked on all our beheads if you could email that information, you're going to send it to the chair of the police board. Cindy, on bylaw?
So, we do have a breakdown. So, for municipal law enforcement with respect to 2016 to 2017, we realized a 12% reduction from 2015 to 2016, a 23% reduction. Municipal bylaw enforcement accounts for 1% of POA revenue.
Okay, as Counselor Jackson says, I think all members of council might like to see that. So, you can go back to our respective standing committees also and ask some questions about it because, once again, it's about making our, it's not about issuing fines, it's about making our community safer. And I think Mike very nicely put it, it's called behavior, and with red light camera issue, and it does affect behavior. And of course, and these police officers, it's perfectly within their right to show discretion. But it's also nice to measure it just so that when the deputies or the superintendents go to parade, they can share this with the frontline officers just so they can see the trends. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Counselor Ferguson. Mr. Mayor, I've got you as a second-time speaker.
Thank you, Counselor. So, on that point, I mean, I, you know, I know we take this as a revenue stream, and that's a, you know, that's a positive, but if we are getting people to do the right thing, our revenue is going to go down, is it not?
Yeah. So, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if we positively affect behaviors, we would expect a decline in the number of charges and our fine revenue. So, I can tell you that in terms of some of these metrics and measurements we are sharing, and in fact, our service channel staff are working with Ken and his team to develop the same dashboards and the same abilities, whether it's MLE or animal control. So, again, this is an information that we're isolating and keeping to ourselves. We're sharing this information to better understand across the services is what are we experiencing and how can they add context to what are we experiencing in terms of charges and revenues?
Yeah, that's, I think that's an important point not to lose. I mean, I think, you know, seeing it just as a revenue stream is one aspect of it, but kind of getting a little bit more granular in the data to understand, you know, how many approaches were made, how many, I mean, if there's leniency, you know, what happened there, I think that'd be important to know. So, I just don't, I didn't want to lose that in the context of the question, and happy to move the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another second-time speaker, Counselor Whitehead, please.
Yeah, just briefly, and we talked about the money for value audits. So, anything we do needs to look under a lens of whether we're getting value. So, when I talked about jurisdiction, you know, that assessment shift, I had asked if we could look at how we're comparing places like London and Kitchener. These are real metrics. And so, it really, what are they doing differently? Are they achieving, are they closing the gap? It's a comparison that we can measure ourselves against. So, I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Whitehead. Mike, outstanding work, well done. Move to receive the presentation. Counselor Brenda Johnson, Counselor, the mayor asked if he could move it, seconded by Counselor Brenda Johnson. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried? Any motions or notices of motions at this time? Hearing none. Motion to adjourn Counselor Pearson. Counselor Matthew Green, seconding adjournment, gets you on the docket. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.